Good to go.
Danny might be hopping on at some point.
Yeah, that's Melissa.
Yeah.
I'm number one.
I got it.
No, here, you have your own.
Yeah, I just want to make sure the sound was on. I called it in as well. It should be, but.
I see you don't.
It's part of the, yeah, you might have tested. Make sure video and sound.
Yeah.
You didn't waste that, that's what we wanted to actually. Last time I was trying to like now. Uh, this, this is a body out there. So even like profile. Okay.
Okay, Nina, you there? I showed Nina, I showed Nina.
Yeah.
Are you there, Nina? Hello? Nina?
Nina.
It's a little better. It's a little prick.
Okay, I haven't getting anybody but Nina.
Okay. Renee?
Yes.
Can you hear me, Renee?
Is this Nina?
Yes, yes.
Okay, yes, I can hear you, yes.
Can everybody hear you?
Oh, my goodness.
So the only problems we will have is Carol and Nina will have to figure something out if they do, um, if there's any more comments. You guys will have to say something, the other ones will just raise their hands, Joyce, Carla. And Shorter, if you have comments, you just raise your hand.
Can you read?
Nina, I don't really get it, like, Brandon.
No.
Wait, wait.
Okay, let's get this show going. First of all, everybody in the crowd here, carry your cell phone. I'm sure you're, I did that, but.
I'm on.
Yes.
Okay, before we get started with tonight's meeting, I'd like to ask aside everyone to speak slowly and into the microphone. I will ask if anyone has any questions. If you do, please raise your hand, and Renee will verify this with me, and those, for those that are on the remote. Okay, we will start, uh, our committee meeting, just Barbara and Sico Council. And first committee up is City Properties, Parks and Recreation, with Mr. Tyler.
Thank you, Mr. President. Call to order the City Properties, Parks and Recreation Committee.
Do we know who that, what that is?
No.
I'm not sure what that is.
Justin, you here?
I don't hear you.
What, you don't hear me?
No.
I don't hear now. You can shut down.
I think it's.
You're official now.
Thank you.
It's okay, now I'm guessing, yeah.
So what? Okay, that's good. Thanks, girl. All right, bring the order of the City Properties, Parks and Recreation Committee meeting. Today is Monday, April twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty, six P M, council chambers. Members are present, Councilwoman Gilbert is remote. Everybody else noted on my list. We have one late request for legislation tonight, so I would need a motion to invoke Council Rule seven oh two to suspend Council Rule three oh two. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
It's moved by Councilwoman Gilbert and seconded by Councilwoman Jaber to suspend, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Passes? All right, what we have is draft ordinance titled appropriation McCafferty Park, appropriating thirty-five thousand from the unappropriated item of the park's revolving funds or the park's revolving budget fund, and this will be referred to finance. In an email from the director, this is to resurface the basketball court at McCafferty Park, the city had a fifty-six thousand eight hundred and forty dollar matching grant from ODNR, land and water conservation. The money was raised between the Summit County Public Health, Harvard Community Foundation, CDVG, and fundraising, so no city funds were used in this project. In two thousand and nineteen, part of this project was the limitless playground portion, and this is the remaining part of it. Do I have any questions? Any questions over there?
Any questions anywhere?
I have none.
No?
No.
Hearing none, do I have a motion to call for this?
I'll make the next one, call someone else.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second that, thank you.
Moved by Councilwoman Gilbert and seconded by Council, Councilman Jaber, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. And that is it for that, do I have any miscellaneous discussion?
How are we going to clean up with the new park and all the starts?
I will have to ask Director McLean to get back to you on that.
I think it's been working. New Park might have been taken care of as we get, we had to hire, uh, Linger, Linger's lumberjacks. We did a, we got three bids, and New Park was on that list. Um, and Tuscoree Park, Annadeen, and Chrisman, I think are all taken care of. But I'll double check on the, uh. Do you have Linger's or Barb and Tree Service? Well, we got three bids this time, yeah. Barb and Tree Service did a number of our emergency work, stuff that was hanging, or that was posing a threat, all the stuff that was on the ground, we're going to forbid for, for everything.
Who was? Linger's, Linger's, Linger's?
Oh, no.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I can't hear. And you've got, you know, I want us on the back end.
Oh, I'm the back end.
And I think I made Carol, Carol, I don't know, Carol, you're aware of her? Carol, you're aware of her?
She's gone. Yeah, she's not on green.
Yeah, just.
Luckily, she's okay, because it's not her bidding, so.
And Chrisman, Annadeen, and.
Is Park.
No.
No. To summarize what, uh, the director said there, Newton, Chrisman, Annadeen.
Tuscoree?
And Tuscoree have all been completed by Linger's lumberjacks, who were the best bid when they bid it out. Do I have any other?
Yeah, yeah.
Questions or conversations? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm motioning adjourned.
I'll second that.
Yeah, motion made by Councilman Jaber, seconded by Councilwoman Gilbert, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at six oh five. Thank you very much. Next up is safety. With, uh, this is the back.
Well, they're on safety. The city, the mayor, they're on safety immediately. It's Monday, eight o'clock in the morning, twenty twenty. All members of the community are present, also all the council members in all of those rooms. We have no, there's no, that's what I'm saying, does anyone have anything to tell us about safety?
I know, I know.
Um, there is one. It is, Mr. Greer.
Mr. Beck, this is Justin Greer, I was just, uh, wanted to ask about where we're at as far as the COVID-nineteen here locally, if there's any new updates as far as safety, how our safety force is doing, have we had any reports of, uh, COVID here in Barbara?
I'll just, so that, um, may I hear that, Nancy, Nancy, yeah?
Um, so are you asking specifically about COVID cases?
Yeah, just how, how, yeah, how we're, how the city of Barbara is handling COVID, where we're at now as far as resources.
Um, so we're, we're doing very well, um, Chief, jump in if you like. We, we do a briefing twice a week with all the department heads and managers. We have ordered, and I believe just received some, some masks and gloves. Um, so we're doing everything we can adhering to all the recommendations and everything through the CDC and the Summit County Health Department. So we don't have, at this point, any employees. I hate to, right, jinx this, uh, so, so far, we're doing very well.
Excuse me, they need you to, I need you to bring talk.
Can't hear you through the phone? Okay, can you hear me now? Uh, so I was trying to just recap it a little bit. Uh, the safety forces have been doing a great job, we have, they have a five-weekly conference calls to all department heads and managers. And we just received our first shipment, or one of our first shipments of mask and gloves Thursday, Thursday, so, uh, we got that one. One or two months ago, I think, yeah, will you?
Uh, just got one other follow-up question. How are our safety forces sitting with PPE as far as mask, if we're, safety forces, if we're, if we're.
Well, I can speak to the police department, we're doing okay. We've got masks, we've got gloves. We've got Juju Juice. Um, we're trying to, you know, feel in an appropriate way, you know, as much as you can. So for, for now, we're, we're okay, we're still working on it. What?
Can you cover the microphones?
Oh, sure. Use this one, that one.
Which one?
This one.
Ben's a moron.
Okay, this is good.
Chief. Uh, we're doing okay, the police department is with PPE right now, so. We have plenty, I think, uh, Law Director Miller found us some A shields, so, and the guys have been using them.
Yeah, I see.
So, good.
And on the fireside, uh, as far as you know, they've been doing very well, and they have all the supplies, I know they've been working with the hospital to use all for pilot rays, the like, to, uh, so they can reuse the mask, so they've been working with Suma on that. Thank you.
But I would say, it comes at a cost, we've spent some money, so. Yeah. And that's a bit too, uh. Red hot supply also, quite a, around fifty masks, so, I don't know. Six four seven two.
Hey, Shorter is.
Uh, for the mayor, do we have any plans here in Barbara, uh, Hospital or something for testing? People have been asking me about testing here, do we have any kind of, uh, plans or anything?
Uh, can you hear me, Shorter?
Yes.
So Suma Hospital is ready to go, once more testing is available. There is testing at the Righty on South Main Street in Portage Lakes area, that might be great. Uh, you still need to make an appointment, log on, and meet the criteria for that testing. Once more testing is available, Suma is ready to go and provide all of that as they move forward, so. Nothing right now, um, for the, the general public, but Suma is ready to move forward, uh, when needed.
Okay.
Mayor? Mayor?
Yes.
Um, so when you say Suma, Suma is ready to move forward, we have nothing, nothing right now, but when, when ready to move forward, they are, does that mean that they have the test?
No, they don't have the test, but they have all of the, um, logistics put together. And we've been working with them on that, um, uh, facilities if needed, uh, logistics, um, barricades, street closures, whatever they need, so.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for, uh, public walk there in safety? And here it's done, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make one.
Motion made by Mr. Griffin, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Greer, we are adjourned at, at nine o'clock, six thirteen.
Thank you very much. Next up, Streets, with Mr. Greer.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, I'd like to bring the order, streets sidewalk and lighting, today's April twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty, we're in council chambers, and all committee members are present, I'd like to note that Mrs. Angeloff and Mrs. Fry are remote, and all council members are present and guests noted. We have one piece of legislation and a late request, we'll start with the first piece of legislation. This is a draft ordinance titled transportation improvement, improvement district grant to support a transportation improvement district grant, or TID, grant through Summit County and the Ohio Department of Transportation for the expansion of jobs to the community. Now, this grant, reading through it, is for infrastructure work for Summit County PD on Hopkin. Is that part of?
Um, so this is part of a much larger, um, scale plan, so this TID grant that we applied for will provide some funding.
I can't hear you, you're like, you're breaking up, I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now, Nina?
No, yeah. There's a, there's a daddy that I can't, I, I can't hear what he's saying. And then he's like, let's, 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 let's.
Sounds like a horn.
I know you have your mic off.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can, you're in a, that's okay, but I can hear you now, 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 now.
I guess I was too close. Okay, we'll try this. The TID grant is a grant through, through Ohio Department of Transportation, through Summit County. They will provide funding, partial, partial funding, sorry, for a project that entails additional jobs coming to the community. So with the anticipation of new jobs coming to the PD facility on Hopkin, the access to that facility, including Wonder Lake Avenue and surrounding area, it is very difficult and challenging. There's basically one way in and out, which is Hopkin or Wonder Lake. There's a non-dedicated alley at the north park on Wonder Lake. To the east is our city parking lot, serves the community at large, including the parks department, the Y and the D facility. The project is to extend Holmes Avenue east to Dead End and to Wonder Lake, so one more additional block. The empty lots that the street will go through are currently owned by the city, so there's no land acquisition, and it will give another way for the general community and employees of PD or others to go in and out of Holmes Avenue. So we applied for that, and we're requesting a resolution of support for the project moving forward. The bigger project here is also redoing the parking lot, the city's parking lot, with a former high school statue, and be able to put in about a hundred additional spots.
Hundred and eleven.
Hundred and eleven additional spots by redoing that lot.
You know, what, what parking lot is this, if we're talking about?
We're the former high school statue.
Okay. Third question, is that all, um, the city's responsibility, or some of that's the YMCA's?
No, no, two separate projects, uh, and all the cities responsible.
And that's, that's not the YMCA parking lot, is it, or?
Correct, correct.
What is the grant amount?
The grant amount is twenty-five, up to twenty-five percent of the total project cost, max out to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We estimate the project to be about three thousand dollars. So it's about twenty, twenty-seven thousand dollars.
So the grant is for twenty-seven thousand?
It doesn't specifically say that amount, but it's twenty, up to twenty-five percent of the total cost. And what's the total cost of the reconstruction? We estimate to be about ninety-three thousand.
I didn't hear any of those questions.
He asked, uh, Mr. Greer asked, what was the project cost, and what was the grant amount for? So total cost is about ninety-three thousand dollars, uh, just for the extension of Holmes Avenue, the grant is twenty-five percent of the total cost.
All right, is there any questions from, about this piece of legislation? All right, hearing none, do I have a motion to call for this?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
And I will second it, even though as though I heard this in pieces, but that's a gal second.
Carol first, Nina second.
All right, motion made by Mrs. Fry and seconded by Mrs. Angeloff, all in favor? Say aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 The next piece of legislation is a request, it's a late request. Uh, before we begin, I need to invoke Council Rule seven oh two to suspend Council Rule three oh two. Do I have a motion? To?
I'll make a motion to suspend. I will second that motion.
All right, motion made by Councilwoman Fry and seconded by Councilwoman Angeloff. Uh, this is a draft piece of legislation. All, uh, all in favor, uh, say aye.
Aye.
All right, this is a draft piece of, uh, draft ordinance entering the contract with ODOT, this is a final resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the resurfacing of South Bendyrin Avenue between Snyder Avenue and the Robinson Avenue, and water, or West Waterloo Road between Looser Road and Cordelia Avenue, including curb ramps and pavement markings. Now, this ordinance is very similar to one we already passed in Streets, was this, this is a final resolution, so I'm looking at the resolution, is it the wording marked in bold, new, the final?
So what we did with the first legislation was just, I know we were committing to participating in the project, it was preliminary participation legislation. This would be the final resolution to enter in the contract with ODOT, for them to provide all the engineering services and perform the project, so after this, ODOT would take this project out to bid, and then it would be under construction later in the summer.
All right.
The wording is a little bit different, where previously it said, they used to write in eighty percent, twenty percent, but now, because some of the percentages are different for different places, they've changed their wording, so it doesn't say eighty, twenty anymore, it says a hundred percent minus any of the federal funding, which in our case is eighty percent.
Right, awesome, thank you, so, um, Mr. Tracy was mentioning some of the bold lettering in the cover of the ordinance that was changed, uh, and I'll just read it here, the city agrees to assume and bear one hundred percent of the entire cost of the improvement within the city limits, plus the amount of federal aid funds set aside by the Director of Transportation for the financing of this improvement from funds allocated by the Federal Highway Administration, U.S. Department of Transportation. Uh, this project is estimated in the amount of one hundred ninety thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars. I believe that's what the cost was roughly on the last.
It is a little bit higher, and that's just with the uncertainty with what's going on right now, but overall, asphalt bids throughout the area have been coming in really low, so I expect this to be right about where, what we originally said, right around one fifty, one sixty.
Awesome, thank you.
I'm being struck with something, it's so loud, I can't hear anything. Renee, tell that.
I didn't know you could see me.
Does any committee member have any questions about this piece of legislation?
Uh, yes, uh, I have a question.
Mr. Griffin?
Uh, yes, could you explain something to me? Where does, uh, West Waterloo Road between Looser Road and Cordelia Avenue, explain it to me, and South Van Buren?
Sure, so West Waterloo Road begins, uh, Looser Road at the old Ryder Dairy Building, and continues, uh, into, that's Kimmore, uh, over the railroad tracks and two blocks down, I believe, to the city limits of Barbara.
Still Barbara.
And still, and, yeah, I didn't even know we went that far in, but, yeah, so it goes two blocks, um, past the railroad tracks into Kimmore on Waterloo Road. Now, the Van Buren, uh, section of the road that will be replaced is from Snyder Avenue to Robinson. Uh, and it's a four-lane section in front of the old BMW complex. For reference.
Okay, it just doesn't say Snyder, it doesn't say Snyder Avenue to Robinson.
Resurfacing South Van Buren Avenue.
Between Snyder Avenue and Robinson?
The under section five, scope of work.
It also says it's in the title.
Yeah, I, I see it, okay.
It doesn't say on the letter, but it says it's on the paper.
Yeah, stop reading it. Okay.
Is there any other questions, Mr. Hyatt?
Thank you, uh, is this project, can issue eight money be used to this project? A hundred and thirty.
I don't think they can hear you.
Uh, I discussed it, the mayor of issue eight money could be used for this project.
Can you, did you guys hear that?
No, he doesn't did.
I hear it.
Nina, could issue eight money be used or would be used for this project?
Thank you.
Here comes the second.
Okay, I hear that.
Yes, it could be used for that.
I, I still didn't hear correctly, a lot of, do you have money being used, by, what was that?
The, the mayor verified that issue eight money can be used.
Sounds like an ultrasound.
It does. Okay, who's pregnant on your?
I know. What is yours?
I just got kicked off. No, you're back on. You're on, you're like, three, my, my screen is blank.
You're on here.
Okay, I'm like, three, I can't see you guys anymore. I don't know what's going on. If you were to have your son in the debo, he's six foot away, and just reading each other.
Yeah.
I have a medical. I had a medical.
All right, um, is there any other questions from council about this piece of legislation?
No.
No, this is, this is issue eight fund?
Yes, this is an eighty, twenty grant.
Okay.
Uh, hearing no additional questions, do I have a motion to call for this?
I want to know.
All right. Motion made by Councilwoman Angelo and seconded by Councilwoman Frye, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, miscellaneous discussion for Streets sidewalk and lighting, any council members? All right, I, um, I will bring up that I reached out to Mr. Tracy, Service Director today and inquired about our road program, um, currently with the state.
They can't hear you, you have to go really far and talk loud.
Today I inquired, uh, or talked to Mr. Tracy, the Service Director. And asked about the status of our two thousand twenty road resurfacing program outside of the AMAT grant projects that we have lined up. As of now, COVID nineteen and the lack of funds have kind of put that, um, on standby, I, it's kind of a wait and see situation. Uh, for the two thousand twenty road program. And we're hoping that funds kind of start rolling in a little bit more. Where it's kind of uncertain right now with the lack of funds coming in, that, uh, but we're hoping to have a late year resurfacing year of some sort. Just kind of depends on revenue for the two thousand twenty year. And. Anybody else have questions? Hearing none, do I, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I will.
All right, motion is, I believe the motion was made by Mrs. Angelo. Then seconded by Mrs. Frye. Streets sidewalk and lighting is adjourned at six thirty. Okay, next up is rules, Mr. Griffin.
Mr. Griffin, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, I can.
You're up, rules are up.
This is going to three readings, isn't it? Four.
Uh, it's, yeah, I got like a voice like an afternoon.
I talked, I talked to Tom. Yeah.
Oh, flowers up, flowers up. Uh, I would prefer. I would prefer, I would prefer to go to three readings, yes.
I might have one question.
Why was this not held until the charter review board came in?
I didn't, I brought it up on this to match with the other proposal of moving it to May. Because I didn't want any time wasted with how our meetings are scheduled, I didn't know how things would go, I didn't know how the governor would respond or the state legislature would respond and how we could meet, so I thought the earlier the better.
I am also talking to Tom about both of these things, it wasn't like saying that it was a code. And I further asked him, I know that he had a certain of, um, the expenses that the city ensures for the primary, I don't know if it comes to twenty nineteen. And they total off nearly sixty-five thousand dollars. I guess, I don't know if Jeremy's with us much right now, but I guess that I would ask, maybe, I guess in my mind, I would give the sixty-five thousand dollars for some of these kinds of votes. In the three readings, so I am wondering if Jeremy does, um, the amount seems very, very logical. Column says all of their expenses and it's nearly forty-five thousand dollars. So certainly all the expenses that total forty-five thousand dollars, I think it should be laid out as to what they are. What if it actually only paying some county's words or like my score, that's a lot of money taken listed as all of her expenses. I don't know if Jeremy had that in his imagination. I wouldn't tell him, but I just got this lately, so. Thank you for having her, her friend.
Uh, this is better too, they, if I'm gonna read it.
Well, I, I do think that, well, I'm not certain, I don't know if I, what the expenses total that are forty-five thousand dollars that are, all of their expenses. So. So I have, I have this.
My dear.
Right there. Okay, so there's the column, it says compensation of judges of elections, that costs us ten thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars. Cost of renting, moving, eating and lighting holding places, that costs one thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars. Cost of status, cars or destruction and other election supplies, four thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars. Cost of delivery ballot, cars, instructions and other election supplies, five hundred and forty-five dollars, and forty-five thousand.
Wow.
So all expenses equal more than almost the things that I listed. So, but the Board of Elections is providing it, I can see that, but that, with that, that shows forty, all of her expenses in a lump of forty-five thousand dollars. I, I think it'd be advantageous for us to find out what, what, that's a lot of money to not count it for what it was used for.
But. It has, and I would want to break down that seventy-five thousand dollars for sure.
So I don't know if Jeremy did that, if he probably, you know, paid for the election, um, but I, I'm, I'm concerned about that, I'm not so concerned about money, but when I saw this breakdown, I was like, holy cow. Because I thought that fifty-five thousand dollars is too much, an awful lot of money, so. That's what my, I really have nothing to do with these pieces of legislation, but I wanted to mention it because that's been really relevant to me and it's probably what he did in there.
Okay, Jeremy's here, who's going to speak?
To answer the question of what that forty-five thousand dollars consists of. I, I don't have that breakdown, I can probably request it from some county, but what that forty-five thousand entails of other expenses, I'm not a hundred percent certain. I do know, uh, we paid for the election through property tax, um, basically when we receive our property tax settlement from some county, they deduct any, um, fees and services from that. I did get our property tax information from some county just on Friday, we received the payment from the property tax. And in the breakdown, they didn't have anything listed in expenses for elections. Now sometimes they are delayed at getting that information to us, so it could be maybe in another week, another month, we might be able to, I will have more accurate figures of what the elections from last year cost us. Um, but right now, based upon what they sent me, there are no expenses for the elections, which I know there should be something.
No, you're on, Carol.
I'm on.
Yes, you're on. Yes.
Well, I, I guess Jeremy told me that I can, well, I think I definitely was, we got so much. You're really fifty-five thousand dollars for sure, but I feel like if they break down the other ones, forty-five thousand dollars is a lot of money, I'm not assuming what it was for. And I, I understand some of it, if you, if you, and we, we had kind of, basically, what is it, man, five thousand dollars for a couple of days?
Yeah, I'll reach out to Summit County, uh, tomorrow, I'll put an email into, see if I can get more information of what that forty-five thousand dollars consists of.
Okay. In, in terms of the ordinance that we're discussing right, right now, this is just the movement of the primary to May, right?
Elimination first.
Elimination of the September primary and moving it to May.
Two, it's two different.
Which one are we on?
We're on the elimination altogether.
Okay. I did not, my ceiling first, I don't know what it could be, what am I doing, closer to the microphone? Oh. I, okay, then I'll speak it when we get to the moving of the primary, then.
Yes, we read.
I'll make a motion to call for it.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Don't ring that.
Yes.
You hear me, okay, now we have, we have, we have, we have, right?
That was the first one, the elimination, see now you go to the next one.
Okay, go to the second now, when we go back to, uh, that's the first thing, we're gonna go three readings on that.
Yeah, when you do your, um, when we're at committee of the whole, when you give your report, you're gonna say that it's called for and we're gonna go three readings, when you're at committee of the whole.
Okay, all right. Okay, I.
Oh, yes, I, I thought. Let me know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try and keep the microphone off and see if we can hear her better that way, and see if you guys can hear her, because for some reason, it's, why not?
I just wanted to remind council that this, this proposal, while Councilman Hyatt brought it forward now, this was presented by the Board of Elections, I think, over a year ago. And they were asking for this uniformly throughout the county. Our council did not decline to do that because the timing of the Board of Elections' request was just not conducive to allowing that to happen in the city of Arvin. Um, and so I just wanted to remind council that request from the board.
You guys read that really well?
Yeah.
Really well. Yes.
I'll make a motion to call for it.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Shortened down, pick one out of there. Melissa McFadden is going to do a public hearing right before committee of the whole is talking about this.
Okay, is there anything else, do we have a motion to call for?
I'll make a motion to call for it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Yes, it was, like, did you make that pass for me?
Uh, I have it out there, I have this, I have it in, I didn't do it. So we have to stand councilable, that motion is standing, stand councilable for all of us.
I'll make a motion to disprove.
Exactly.
I'll second that.
Okay, with that effect, I, I, I didn't see it on the list, I definitely, I did see it on your other one, but I shouldn't say. Do we have any other things to make it's right?
Yeah, just make a move.
Uh, I thought we did. Uh, I like that, all in favor or disapprove?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, now, we're doing all of this, now we want to.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair, you may, you have one more to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
We have another question.
Oh. Oh, what, three?
Oh, three, and, oh, okay. But that doesn't be, be, be.
They just did that.
That's good.
Is that done? Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought, I thought you were going back and send it on, I'm sorry.
No.
Okay. Alright, we're finished.
Okay. Any more, we have any make final adjustments? We have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned at six forty-eight.
Okay, next up is environmental health and social sciences, Mr. Kayden.
Same for the president. It's six forty-nine, encompassing the environmental health and social services. April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty, all member of the present.
Can you guys hear me?
And all others noted?
Yeah.
Open market all of them.
Okay, yeah.
And all others noted, we have no request legislation and open conference discussion. Anybody? All right, hearing none, motion to adjourn.
I will second that.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Griffin, and second, Hyde.
Uh, Mrs. McFadden, does have a question.
Okay.
Um, and, and anything else for the mayor, but, um, today, my great governor, the line might go, um, he mentioned, uh, an entry in, a huge entry for money to our health department throughout the state. Do you have any idea what that looks like for our, our health department, like, kind of health department?
Uh, no, we'll find out more details tomorrow when we have a conference call with the health department. The governor's office does not release anything to other, uh, people prior to his news conferences. So I'll have more details tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and you guys, this nice discussion. Okay, and motion to adjourn, please. Shortened?
I'll second that.
All right. Second, we got motion to Griffin and second, Hyde. And it is six fifty, and adjourned at fifty, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next up is planning, annexation and codes with Mrs. Angela.
Good evening, good luck, sir. Uh, since Monday, since Monday, uh, the government needs to, uh, all of the members for present along with the director council and deputy on my team. We have, uh, one piece of legislation, I'm sorry, we're, we're not gonna get a man. First of all, uh, let's take it as a draft, resolution to highlight fair housing, uh, proclaiming April as a fair housing month. Um, and his act, um, this is, uh, it, it, it appears how the act of nineteen sixty-eight continues to play an important role in the development of our neighborhood by providing share and people housing up to the goal. This is very exciting. So, five minutes. Do I have a motion? I'll make the most. Over.
I'll second that.
Yeah, did, did, that one was late also, did you, did you use your vote, possible, did we?
No.
Oh, no, no, that one.
Not that one? That would announce.
Second, I'm gonna say here.
I'll, I'll second.
Do I choose first or second? The title, don't say.
Mr. Griffin, second.
Mr. Griffin, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's a way to, to, to. Alright, respectability of legislation is a late people legislation. We have to devote councilable seven oh two to stand councilable three oh two. Do I have a motion? I'm gonna have a motion, this is the second. Over, or by the second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Griffin, or is that not Griffin?
That's Mr. Magus.
Mr. Edmonds? Thank you, all in favor? Aye. This is a draft ordinance tied by formations of the community improvement corporations. Upright into formation of the community improvement corporations of the city of Auburn and the proving in part of incorporation. Um, and I believe that, uh, the mayor sent out, um, Sunday evening about four o'clock a break down of the conference of this, um, what this is for. Um, and this is not specifying B C D G and C F or any of that. Um, this, this injunction was, um, worthy of all of the other, um, open debate. For this one, it's, um, it had different perfection, um, property, um, and there's just a guarantee difference in that one. Um, so I would like to ask anybody that has any questions, could, um, address relative to the mayor. Mayor?
Um, yeah, I can add to what the email I sent out answering the questions, and I appreciate all the questions this weekend. Um, I do have the code of regulations, uh, which do go with the articles of incorporation as well, and I will pass those out. That gives a little more specifics on the composition of the board. And I'll read that that states it's comprised not fewer than five voting directors and not more than fifteen. Uh, two-fifths of the board shall be composed of appointed or elected officials in this other city. One shall be the mayor, one shall be the service director.
It's D B Mayor, it's D B Mayor, I, 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 I don't know, I, I, I don't know what you're saying.
Okay, we're gonna try this. Okay, can you hear me now? So, the code of regulations. I'm announcing a major thing, basically. Um, the, the board of directors will be comprised of not fewer than five, not more than fifteen.
I, I, I'm, I'm not going to talk more right now, so I'm going to do a group, anything that has, I don't know, don't, don't go in on any of it.
Can you hear me now?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay, so, I went through the kind of composition of the board. This includes the mayor, the service director, his director, and one member of councilwork council. Also comprised of residents and non-residents who have, who have interest in the city and in the business of promoting, uh, the community. So, this does not take the place of B C D C or N C S, um, or N D S. Economic development has changed over the years quite a bit. So this is just another kind of tool in our toolbox to allow further growth, um, in the community. So N C S does some great programs, um, N D S does some great projects and programs, B C D C does some great things, but no one encompasses everything. And, uh, there isn't an organization out there that does encompass everything. So this just gives us another toolbox, uh, tool in the toolbox to kind of help with, with development, so. We've been working on this, uh, with attorney, uh, through the planning department, who's working, putting these code of regulations together. Um, it's a nonprofit, um, any of the board of directors cannot profit monetarily from this. Um, so it's, it's established like a B C D C, but it's somewhat under the, more of the control of the city.
Mayor? Or Chair Thorson? Sorry. And so, Ted, can I, can I ask a question? How will this be funded?
So this, since it's a nonprofit, it can be funded by the city, it can be funded by grant money. Uh, so the city can't go out and get grant money for operations, but this organization could. So if we're talking about cash, it can also go out and hold property, uh, for, for sale or for development or for, um, kind of as, as a landlord, if you will. So there's several ways that it can generate revenue.
Well, I, I didn't, I didn't get that bill, I'm sorry, I heard it, I know it's a nonprofit, um, grant money and whatnot, but I, I can't hear for new bills.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, so, can you fund it, can you fund it? Grant money, grant money?
Where's the change, see if this works.
Okay. Uh, so the city can fund this, uh, this, this organization could go out for grant funding, uh, to, to fund it. It could hold property, it could lease property, it could be a landlord. So there's many ways that it could, um, fund its operations. So the first step is getting it recognized by, uh, city council. Right now, nothing has been sent to the state to form it, it needs city council permission first.
Well, you had mentioned that the city can fund it, how would we fund it? Through our general fund?
It could be funded through general fund or by C, C D B G money, as long as those activities, um, meet the national objective of HUD. So there'll still be a lot of reporting and an annual report and all that.
Okay.
So I have another question, and to be back to what the mayor just said, um, so would that then reduce the funding that we would give to N C S and B C D C and N D S from our C D B G allocation? Because we have our own, even though there are.
Uh, it could, um, every year, we ask for all organizations that receive C D B G funding to apply again. So we don't write any blank checks to anybody, um, we look at what the community needs are, and then, you know, every organization has their specialty, so, um, it could, um, but that's not the plan, but it definitely could. Um, we just have to see how, um, things shake out.
Okay, I guess I'd just have one more comment, well, two more comments, um, Mrs. Angela, if I may. Um, so my first comment is that, um, I would argue that, um, for example, N C S and B C D C, they adjust to the community if we express to them what our community needs are. So I would hate to see any funding be taken from them, there's very little that they receive anyway from the B C, or from the C D B G, um, plan. Also, in closing, um, I am really not comfortable voting on this tonight, um, I, uh, you mentioned that you have, uh, the rest of what we need to look over, that wasn't, uh, attached to this, and, um, I would like us to go three readings, so, okay. My opinion?
Yeah, I'm fine with that, um, I put the articles of incorporation in and, uh, not the code of regulations, but I've got that, I'll make copies, and it'll be in the mailbox tonight, uh, for all council members. Yeah, I'm finding the three readings, um, looking at where our local economy is and looking at, uh, the economic ecosystems moving forward, I think it's, it's vital that we have as many resources as possible moving forward. You know, B C D C, N C S, N D S, they may, um, look at what the community needs are and adjust, but they're still limited in their capacity to do everything. And so having something else in our toolbox that can help us is, is a definite plus on our side. Uh, the city of Green, Copland Township, Monroe Falls, Stowe, Akron, all these communities have this, um, these C I Cs, and, uh, they're very beneficial and, uh, so I think it's, uh, something that we need to act, act on. But I'm fine with going three readings.
So, I have, I, I guess I have, I guess I have another question based off of what you just mentioned. Um, the, the communities that have that fee, do they also have, uh, nonprofits affiliated with them, like B C D C and N C S? Or do they just have the C I P?
Uh, it varies, uh, Copland Township just has the one, I believe, Akron has many of them. Um, I believe Green, City Green has many of them, so, or several of them, so, yeah, it, it varies. But someone like a Copland Township, I'm sorry, someone like a Copland Township would make use of more programs, um, from the county, from some county themselves, where the city of Auburn may not be able to make use of those programs because we're a chartered community.
Okay, I have, uh, talked to the mayor today, and, um, I already expressed three readings on this. Um, and I know that, um, he, he said one way or the other, I know he wants to get started with this because if money is coming from the COVID nineteen, he would like a committee in place, um, you know, when they, sort of, we build enough different, um, um, establishments and things of that sort. Um, so I'd like to hear from my committee, um, what they would like to do, Mr. Colvin.
Well, I definitely would like to talk to this.
Alright, okay, and then Mr. Griffin?
Thank you, Chair, actually, I'm gonna take a minute, um, that you afforded me to kind of address some points, questions, and concerns about this piece of legislation. I think the idea is great, and it would be, uh, naive to restrict or prevent another tool for economic development. Um, and I guess I'm gonna lead into some questions for the mayor. Uh, have we reached out to B C D C to see if they would take on a change of vision?
Well, it's not really the last, like, six months. Yeah, they, they're fully aware of this, um, and, and one thing is somewhat controlled. So B C D C has two employees, um, so their capacity to do certain things is kind of maximized now. They're great at property management and dealing with S P A loans and other, uh, small business loans, um, but they're not developed. So to take that on is a big task that, um, and plus, we only get one vote, um, on their board, where there's other individuals there that have a different vision, so, um, we can work side by side on a lot of projects.
Um, I guess I'll segue into the question. Uh, I reached out to you via email on the twenty-fifth and asked you about this piece of legislation. Um, and your response was that B C D C was formed through the city of Auburn and since then, kind of, it's won its own way, so I'm gonna tee now. Um, what safeguards are we putting in place to make sure that this new organization is not gonna go the way of B C D C? If, uh, that's the case, if we can't use B C D C, because that's what they were formed for, uh, what's stopping the new one from?
So, B C D C was started in the mid-eighties, um, and then at some point during the nineties, I'm not sure how or when, it kind of went its own way. Um, the city still has a seat at the board and everything, but I'm not sure how or why or when exactly that happened. Um, the intention of this is to be another, um, asset in our toolbox. Um, and I think the whole economic climate and the way things are done for development today versus the eighties and even the nineties has changed quite a bit, that, um, I would never see this ever going that direction, and I would hope that in the future, uh, future administrations would not push us off onto, into that direction. Um, I don't know if that takes council action to do that or not.
You mentioned, uh, that B C D C wasn't good at, say, uh, development or this. What are we doing for development? What would we bring as a city for, this is to be an organization under the mayor's office, correct? What, who would we bring in that would be better than people that have been doing it for a long time?
Well, they really haven't been doing the development aspect, um, again, we could, there's things that are needed throughout the entire state, not just the Department of Spec Buildings. So to get a developer to build a spec building is, is difficult, because they're putting up all their money upfront, and they want someone possibly to backstop it. So does B C D C have those resources? If they had the resources, you know, there's administrative costs, there's all kinds of things that go along with them taking on more job duties. So if we already have that on, on our side, we can work in tandem with them, get a spec building built, you know, and, and they can fill it with businesses that they interact with.
Okay. How would we, do we plan on hiring a developer to run this? I don't understand how to.
So right now. So right now, there's no plans to hire anyone. We don't have the funding. The first step is to have council's permission or approval, and then we go file this with the state. So there's a timeframe to do all that. So I just want to get everything set up so when we start moving forward, that we've got everything ready to go and that we can look at the different avenues. You know, some of these are, they, some of them hire directors and staff. Some of them work it internally. Some of them work it for specific cases or specific developments. So there's a lot of ways we can use this. So it's just not kind of one street or one avenue. There's a lot of latitude with using this.
And that would be, I mean, we would, to sustain that, we would have to fund it.
If you have expenses, you have to have the revenue, right?
And now, you're saying that that won't necessarily take away, I mean, it will. It's going to take away from the pot of what we have already, but.
If we fund it by the city.
Right. So, and the city would be the ultimate fallback because it has to be funded some way or another, I think, with.
But as a nonprofit, it could apply for grant funding through the state or the feds or through a foundation or something.
I just have two more questions. You mentioned that the attorney in the planning department or through the planning department put this together, had our, has our law director physically looked at this to make sure it's legal and safe for the city?
I'm not sure. This was put together, discussed by myself and the former planning director, and he had been working on this with that attorney for some time. So I'm not sure if it came across our law director's desk or not. I would hope so.
And Mrs. Angeloff, Chair, I'm going to ask you a question. Do you currently physically have the Code of Regulations sitting in front of you?
Why? I can't hear you.
Do you have a physical copy or a digital copy of the Code of Regulations in front of you?
I don't know what you're asking me, Justin.
There's a. He asked if you have the Code of Regulations in front of you, which you do not.
So what I'm, all right, and hearing that, I, Mrs. Miller, would you care to weigh in? You don't have to, but would you care to weigh in this? Did you review this?
I did not. I will come up there. I did not review them. However, I do know Herb Sugarman, who did draw the document up. I work, I've worked with Herb. Herb has done work for us before. So I can certainly get that from him and review it.
Please.
Yes. I would be happy to do that.
And as I mentioned earlier, I've got them here. I will make copies and they will be in everyone's mailbox this evening.
All right. Well, I'm just going to wrap up to kind of just give my input to the committee. Seeing that we don't have the Code of Regulations in hand, and this is, it's a good thing. Don't get me wrong. I like the idea of this. This is, it's a late request. We don't have all the paperwork in front of us, and with that, I just would like to see this tabled until next week, until we have a time as a committee to look at the documents.
It is going three reads, though.
But it still has to leave committee, and I haven't seen that paperwork before the vote. So if it would be voted on today, my vote, I'm just going to excuse myself from voting. I don't feel comfortable pushing it forward.
Now, my only apprehension to that is that I don't know what we're going to do internally with council. We're going to wait another two weeks, which I would suspect that's the case on meeting. So that's my only apprehension. But like I said, you'll have a copy before I leave the building tonight. But I get where you're coming from.
I just, yeah, I just like, I don't have it now. I can't see it now.
Hi, Mr. President. The committee, are you, are you, you want to cancel this next meeting that we would have?
I don't. I should.
Pardon?
I should go ahead and call for this because of the COVID money coming if we don't have it. And therefore, why should we lose getting the opportunity to have that money?
I would just say, please don't use the word "table." You can, you can call for something and call for three readings, but "table" is not a word in our rules, so.
Did you guys hear that?
Table means something different. And I don't think that, I don't think Mr. Breer was asking for tabling. Were you?
Yes.
You were?
Yeah.
I was asking.
We have a table issue in our rules. We have to look at our rules on tabling. Table doesn't mean.
Hold it. Okay. Well, I would like to, I mean, I personally would like to postpone calling for this piece of legislation.
Did you guys hear, Mr. Breer?
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Heiden has a question as well.
Go ahead. Thank you. I have just two questions. Do, when it comes to the initial board of directors, do we have a short list and how are they put on the board? Is the first question.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. For the initial board of directors, do we have a list of names that are being considered for one? And for two, how do they, how are they put on the board initially?
So Mr. Heiden asked, there's a board of directors with the CIC. He asked if there is a list of members to be considered for the CIC. And if so, or separate from that, how are they put on the board? There is not a list. I don't want to put the cart before the horse, and that's something that we would discuss after this was formed. Again, there's no hurry per se, but when the economy starts coming back, I think it's going to come back in a different way, and it's going to come back fast. The way they're put on, it's listed in the Code of Regulations, and again, you'll have that by the end of, before I leave the building tonight. So it's all spelled out in that way, and talks about the background. You have to have a background.
The qualifications, yeah.
Associates and qualifications, and be of good moral standing and all that at the core of professional. So it's kind of a boilerplate textbook for both of them, so.
And then my second question is, and I emailed you the questions, and I appreciate your answering them, but I just want to follow up on one that I emailed you. Those CICs, according to the RRC codes, when I looked them up, are not subjects of public records requests. Is there something that could be added to our Articles of Incorporation to force the board of directors, for lack of a better term, to give us updates biweekly, weekly, monthly?
I didn't hear all of that.
So Mr. Heiden asked if there was more transparency. The RRC does not force or permit.
They're not subject. CICs are not subject to public records.
CICs are not subject to public records requests. And is there a way that that could be kind of worked into it?
Just that they could update the council, like I said, biweekly, once a month?
Yeah.
Just basically a report.
So in the Code of Regulations, again, you'll have this. Section 6 talks about public notice of all meetings. So that should be out there so people can attend those meetings. I'd have to talk to our law director and to Mr. Sugarman possibly to see if that can be worked in there or if there's anything that precludes that. I know from BCDC and the Foundation's perspective, and I don't know the similarities and differences when it comes to that subject there. Both are open to the public. They've both been recorded by the local paper for live streaming, and they give out an annual report and monthly reports and all those things, so.
I would just, me personally, I would feel more comfortable if we create, if we create this corporation, it would be, it would put me more ease and be a sign of good faith that they would come and update us at least once a month in front of us since we're, those other ones were created, like you said, back then. If we're going to start anew, I think that we need to start right and show the good faith and show the transparency of everything.
This will be giving updates to the Planning Commission on a monthly basis as well, but there's no issue with, since it also involves a council member, it doesn't, there shouldn't be any issue on updating council either, so.
Thank you, Mr. Heiden. Mr. Colburn, that question.
It's not a question, but it's a statement. All of those organizations, we have assigned, and do not disclose what goes on in our meetings because of the people we're dealing with. Offering loans when I was on the rules when we went to BCDC, they dealt with people's private business, so that was part of the privacy that was not allowed to be publicly disclosed.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Mendez.
Yes.
Trying to get my committee to talk. So what is your feelings on this for spelling it for the next meeting or going through three readings? What are your comments?
I would like to just go with three readings on this. I think there was plenty of time to clear the facts up.
Mr. Colburn? I agree with Mr. Mendez, but I'm prepared to call for this law act. We will go three readings on this, and hopefully that doesn't turn this one into a concern with the COVID-19 Fund of the Act. And do I have a vote?
Mr. Breer, a couple of questions?
I have a question, just because I don't want to forget it next time we discuss this. Mrs. Angeloff has mentioned several times about possible, or about COVID-19 money coming. Mrs. Angeloff, are you referring to the money that the CDBG is, additional money that CDBG is getting from the CARES Act?
No, no. I'm just saying, in, in, if this, you know, if we have the CIC, then there might be some money that they can get as a grant for that. Now, I'm interfering with the deal.
Okay, so Mayor, then can I ask you this? If, if there would be grant money available that through the Act around COVID-19, would it be possible for NCS and BCC to apply for that grant money?
Anything's possible as long as it meets the national objective of HUD. So Melissa will go into that. That's what her public presentation is about. And so, yeah, it's possible.
So is this, so is this, then, the CIC, is this in anticipation of the CDBG money from the CARES Act?
No, this was, we were going to present this no matter what. And I hope.
I just heard, I just heard it's based on COVID-19, and I don't, I didn't necessarily get that vibe from you, so I just wanted, you know, you know, if there's money available and we wouldn't have it passed through, BCC and NCS, if they meet those guidelines, would definitely be able to apply for the grant, correct? Because they're nonprofits.
Yeah, well, any money, well, yes. From that perspective, yes. But any money coming for COVID-related expenses or COVID-related programs are geared towards economic development. So we're, Melissa will get into this. I'm sorry for stealing your thunder, Melissa, but, you know, they passed out the letter, they passed out the amount to the communities that we're going to receive. They have not passed out all the restrictions or criteria. So, but we've got to get things moving because there's always a timeliness factor. So Melissa's been on the phone with them. She's been talking to everybody from local levels, counterparts, all the way up to the state and feds, and everyone's waiting for that criteria. So technically, yes, because they are a nonprofit, but we got to wait and see what all the criteria is.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Heiden had a question.
No.
Mr. Heiden had a question.
No, Mr. Jayber has a question, Angela.
Mr. Heiden told me that he had a question.
Mayor, who's on the board of BCDC from the city?
Myself, the chair, the planning director, or planning committee, and the planning director.
Has anybody spoken to Scott Wagner or anybody from BCDC about this matter? And what did they say? They for it or they?
Yeah, I talked to him about it. You're available on this.
You're going, are they for this or are you on your side of this? And you just think it's bad timing right now with all this going on with the, is it good timing?
This is an economic development tool. So this is perfect timing because there's a lot of things going on with the economy. Whether it's the loss of BMW or COVID-19, this is something that'll definitely put us ahead.
And also, if we had administrations going for this and taking care of this through prior, in the past, you think our administration right now is capable of using this in the right way?
Yeah, yeah, there's no, there was no wrongdoing in the past that I'm aware of.
Not wrongdoing, but just our economy. I mean, city of Barbara's financial problems, you think we can handle this? I mean, if you guys gave you guys the authority to do this, you'd be okay with this and use this for the right reasons?
We thought about all that. And we have to follow the Articles of Incorporation and Code of Regulations and everything.
I just think it's bad timing right now for this, and also without Lisa looking over this, but I think we should have her, her say and her support, so I mean, go with her and what she thinks.
I, I, I tell you, I'm going to have to repeat what you have to say there. I didn't get that. That's the ending on this whole thing.
Mr. Jayber would like to wait. He thinks the timing is bad, and since, and he'd rather have Laura Miller look at the information, Articles of Incorporation, and the Code of Regulations, and get her to weigh in on it as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jayber. Thank you, Mayor. Do I have a call for this?
One more question. So.
One more question.
Not a question, not a question. So Renee and I have been to some trainings on Robert Tull's and this motion.
Lisa Miller's talking.
This motion to table had come up, and we both knew that it was an important thing, and we both forgot what it was, and that we both remembered it simultaneously. So a motion to table is an improper motion because what it does is it, it quashes all discussion because it just tables it, and no one can do anything about it at any time, right? It just takes it, puts it on the table, and then how do you get it off the table? How do you ever talk about it? And what the proper motion is, is a motion to postpone to a date certain. So if you don't want to vote to call for it, the only other proper motion is to postpone to a date certain. Now, in terms of how we do business here, a motion to call for it, and if you called for three readings, then I'm not telling you to do that. I'm just saying that is almost a postponement to a date certain because you're, you're, it's going forward, but it's not being voted on the next time. But a postponement to a date certain is not a call for it. So those are your options, but a motion table is not a proper motion, and that is the reason why. I just couldn't remember it, but I knew we couldn't do it, so I apologize for that. It took me running upstairs for her and I to both remember it at the exact same time.
Thank you. Thank you. So am I that on again?
Yes.
I have a question to the call for this piece of legislation, first motion with Mr. Colburn. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Who is that?
Mr. Mendez.
Mendez.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's a rare, do I?
No.
Pardon?
No.
Not.
No.
All those against.
You don't want to bring it out, you don't want to bring it out for three readings?
No, I don't want to bring it out of committee.
So it's a no vote. All right. The next online, I will, maybe there was a short, simple discussion. There are patents and a conditional offer made to an applicant to fill the shoes of the pending right, but it's a conditional offer and that's, that is the back. So they have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mendez.
Mr. Mendez, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I'm sorry, who is that?
Mr. Breer.
So we are adjourned at 7:28 PM.
Okay. Next up is City Utilities, Mrs. Colburn.
Thank you, Mr. President. City Utilities are meeting in the building, in council chambers, and remotely. All members are present, both online and in the building. Our first request for legislation is a draft ordinance titled WWCC Improvement, authorizing the mayor to apply for, accept, and enter into a cooperative agreement for the finding of waste water treatment and improvement in any three projects. for the finance of water treatment and improvements in any three projects when the City of Arlington and the Ohio Water Development Board. Is there any remarks? Hearing that, do I have a motion to call for this?
I make a motion to call for it.
And seconded, and seconded from Charlotte, uh, from Charlotte Development. All in favor?
Aye.
Next request for legislation is a draft ordinance titled The Appropriation Northern Sanitary Sewer, appropriating one hundred thirty-five thousand six hundred seventy dollars from the unappropriated item of the Northern Sanitary Sewer Construction Fund to the capital line item of the Northern Sanitary Construction Fund. And it will be referred to finance. Are there any remarks? No.
I, I have a question. Is this, um, is this appropriation an extra? Is that why it's, when we tell it to finance? Pardon?
This is not an extra, no.
Not the, okay.
This is, this is the sum total of praise upon North Neighbors in Brentwood that was approved by council two weeks ago.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, do I have a motion to call for this?
I make a motion.
Do I respect it? I'll, I'll make that second. All in favor?
Aye.
All. Any one again? Okay, uh, during this length of session, I have a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn. I'll back in the motion.
We are adjourned, another three.
Okay, last but not least is finance with Mrs. Fry.
Okay, and everybody? Yep. Yes. Okay. It is February twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty. Um, we are in council chambers and in homes and in offices in the city buildings. And, um, all members of the city are present as well as all council people. And yes, as noted, um, tonight we have, it wasn't related, the first being a draft ordinance titled Weston Ration, our Local Government Fund. And this, uh, piece of legislation is promptly urging the governor to wind in the Ohio Legislature to reinstate a local government fund to communities without assistance throughout the state of Ohio. Do I have any comments?
Uh, Councilwoman Fry, may I explain?
I didn't hear you, Bill.
Uh, if I could explain a little bit?
Go ahead.
So there is not a draft resolution associated with this. Okay, is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, there's not a draft resolution associated with this. We have a team looking at, little background, we have a team looking at all of the available funds or pro, proposed available funds for municipalities, whether it's, um, COVID-related expenses reimbursement or its infrastructure or its employees or trainings or what have you. There's been a lot of talk, so we're looking into all those. In discussions with the Mayor's Association, um, you know, we've all been hurt by the loss of the local government fund. So there's been a lot of talk with all these stimulus packages. Where's this money going to come from? And it's not, it's adding to our national and state debt, things of that nature. Well, here's a way that they can reinstate something that was taken away that would really help all communities. So, um, as I draft this and you'll have this for the next meeting, it's just a resolution of support, uh, not an ordinance urging the governor and the state to reinstate the local government fund. But as I'm putting this together, more and more communities are, are coming together and wanting to sign on to a letter and get a copy of the, the resolution. So, um, as I'm putting it together, there's more facts and figures, um, that are associated with it. So I keep changing it and updating it. So you'll have that, um, as soon as possible, um, this, hopefully this week. Um, again, it's just a resolution of support, um, so municipalities don't get left out because not only are businesses hurting, but municipalities are hurting as well.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Um, and I'm sorry, it said ordinance on my seat, so that's what I read. I wasn't looking at the resolution. Um, do I have a motion to call for this, or does anybody have any questions, first of all, or Bill?
I just have a little question. He mentioned that he would get us the draft next, next week. Um, but we're supposed to vote on this tonight. Are we?
No, we, we can.
Read it?
You know, I'd like to have it passed, but obviously it's, you don't have it in front of you. It's just a resolution of support, um, but, yeah, you'll have it.
Figures and tampering a whole bunch of, so I, I'm asking you.
Yeah, it's, it's similar to what we've passed the last few years.
Yeah, okay. I, I'm just not ready to voting for something that, that we don't, we don't look yet. I.
Right, totally understand.
Okay. Do I have a motion to call for this piece of legislation?
I'll make the motion.
I will. I'm sorry, do you want that?
Mr. Magis.
Mr. Magis, okay. Motion made by Mr. Magis, seconded by, I'm seconded by, okay. I will second Angela. Okay, thank you, Nina. All in favor, please, if I may say, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay. All right, the next piece of legislation is a draft ordinance, I F appropriation, Northern Sanitary Sewer. This is an appropriation in the amount of one hundred and thirty-five thousand six hundred and seventy dollars from the unappropriated item of the Northern Sanitary Sewer Construction Fund to the capital line item of the Northern Sanitary Sewer Construction Fund. And this was referred from, so. Does anybody have any questions?
I might need to extend the rule.
I'm waiting for them to bend in the rule.
Okay.
I'll second that. Aye.
Okay. Uh, um, does anybody have any questions about how they need to keep the legislation in the appropriate areas?
I'll make that motion.
I might have any further, pray right back. As we were presented, uh, all things classified by by name.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, um. We all have something else on the list for the nine nine and maybe areas of the number thirty-nine-nine-one-one-one. This is in terms of final income by I O A A C. Our first review was on November twenty-two, twenty-one, and the nine-nine will be over that next week. And then. We have, um, the financial report, the unit for, um. Okay, if you're, if you're, if you're ready.
All right, can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Starting with the health insurance fund, uh, the revenues for the month of March was almost four hundred thousand dollars. Expenditures were about three hundred and fifty-six thousand. That makes the year-to-date revenues of eight hundred and forty-nine thousand. Expenditures, eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand. The net year-to-date is a positive twenty thousand. Moving on to the income tax fund. For the month of March, our estimate was eight hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. The actual came in at nine hundred and seventy-one thousand, one hundred and forty-six. The twenty-twenty year-to-date estimate was two million, six hundred and seventy-five thousand. Actual year-to-date is three million, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand. That makes us over our estimate by about five hundred and thirteen thousand. Uh, you will see in the income tax transfers, a negative number for street operating. Um, in the budget workbook, the temporary budget that was passed in December of twenty-nineteen, it had for transfers from income tax fund to the street operating fund. Well, the budget that was passed by council in March did not have that transfer. So we had to undo that transfer so it would follow the budget that was passed in March.
You're, you're, because I'm not going to go over this.
All right, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Did you guys hear about the income tax transfers?
No.
Okay, we'll start with the income tax fund again. The estimate for the month of March was eight hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. Actual was nine hundred and seventy-one thousand, one forty-six. The year-to-date estimate for twenty-twenty is two million, six seventy-five, five fifty-four. Actual for the year was three million, one eighty-nine, three thirty-seven, which puts us as an overestimate by about five hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. If you will see in the income tax transfers, you see a negative number for street operating transfers. That's because the temporary budget had us transferring, uh, a quarter of last year's. Well, the actual budget that was passed in March by council, it did not have a transfer to street operating, so we had to undo those transfers to comply with the budget. Um, let's see here. The estimated numbers for the month of April, um, we do, we show that positive about five hundred and thirteen thousand, which is a good thing, because looking at the estimate from CCA for the month of April, we're gonna be short of moving our estimate probably by about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So we're gonna start seeing this, our, our estimate being, or actually being over our estimate. We're gonna see that number start shrinking over the next few months due to COVID-nineteen. Um, I, I'm hoping we can get through the next couple of months and be right around breaking even or be under our estimate a little bit, because I have a feeling once the economy starts opening up, people file their taxes in July and everything, that we should see numbers coming in in August and September for revenues that are higher than in previous years. So we're gonna have just a delay in collection this year, I have a feeling. Now, will we be hitting our exact marks? It's too early to tell, but the, the actual being over our estimate right now is a good thing for us, because it will help us carry over these next few months that are gonna be a little slow. Moving on to the statement of cash receipts, we have a handful of funds in the negatives. The first one, the street grant, or the city grant fund, Fund Two Thirty-eight, that's in the negative due to incomprehensives. That is due to the EPA grant that we, uh, awarded last year. They took out the POs for that, so once we expend that money and turn in proper paperwork and we get reimbursed, uh, that will go away. The next one is CDG Fund Two-Fifty, uh, that's the federal HUD fund, where it's reimbursable once we do the expenditures and turn in all that paperwork. The next one in the negative is the Northern Sanitary Sewer Construction Fund. That is in the negative, because we're still making reimbursement from OWBA and OPWC for stuff that we haven't paid for, but are reimbursable through the line. The next one is Fund Six-Sixty. This is a new one that's in the negative. It's only in the negative, because, uh, we took out the PO for the entire year for our healthcare through Summit County. So you will start seeing that negative number on the far right going down throughout the year as we charge back to different departments and everything. That will start going down at the year-to-date and be more aligned to probably the six hundred and seventy, seven hundred thousand dollar mark. Then the next one is the Internal Cost Compensation Fund. Uh, that is used for payroll purposes. There was just an error on a journal entry that was posted that was corrected in the month of April, so that would be break even, because every month that account should break even, because be a zero dollar amount. Moving on to the three months of activity. You will see general fund has stayed basically the same, about three hun- or three million. Special revenue funds are down by a little bit, because we had, well, let's see here. Well, we had more transfers this month, so that's why it went down. Uh, the enterprise funds have remained about the same. All other funds, it is showing in the undercurrent cash balance as a negative, and that, as I just stated, was just because we took out the PO for the whole year for, uh, healthcare for Summit County. Comparing twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty, the general fund is up by about five hundred thousand. The special revenue funds is up by about one point two million. Enterprise funds are about the same. All other funds is chosen the negative because of that PO being taken out for the whole year healthcare. Uh, if you look at the cash balance from last year to this year, the cash balance is up, and the undercurrent cash balance is down just because of that PO for the healthcare. Any questions? Yes.
Um, what, what, did you kind of tell me, was why I don't know if I paid that in some of my, my?
We, we didn't pay along some, all we did is take out the PO. Uh, one of the, one of the things that the auditor suggested is some of our contracts, such as the healthcare for Summit County, that we pull out the PO for the whole year. Uh, they were, they prefer us to do it that way as in years past where we handled it as a progress pay. So to comply with the auditor's office, we decided to take out the whole PO.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, your members. Does anyone else have a question for you, Lori Rose?
No.
Okay. Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, um, do I might know those all, or the seventh, uh, the Marla twenty-twenty financial form? I'll make no addition. Rose made by my, my, my. Do I have any? I would thank you. If you need, I said by my standing off, all things, as I say, nine.
Aye.
Aye. Does anyone have anything, anything, just about that for my mind? Okay. Your, your, I, I, I want to turn her. I'll make no addition to her. Okay, was that done, Hannah?
Yes.
Okay, bye-bye. Carla. Carla. Thank you, Carla. Okay, and we are, and seven, four, eighty. Okay, thank you.
Okay, that concludes our committee meetings. We, we will take a two-minute break, and then we'll come back. We have a public hearing tonight.
Okay.
I need to make a scene in the program.
I can find a different way to do this. I mean, I'm separating like sixteen, like the same room at the hospital.
We can't have more.
Yeah, we, that's, you know, it's not the distance, it's the number. I mean, I almost feel like if everyone just called in on your phone where you're sitting, the go-to meeting, and you didn't use the microphones, then we're just using the go-to meeting.
That's what I thought too, but his, his, he really does.
He's got, yeah, he's got a lot going on over there, and he's closest to you.
But I turned the microphone off at one time and didn't do anything.
Yeah. And all use go-to meetings. This is, it's very specific.
I didn't, that's why I.
There's no, it's not working right.
That's why I asked you, what, what?
We can do two.
And that's what I said, we're just, just. The coach is the last one.
And we can have one, yeah. Ah, I hope he didn't wrong.
Yeah, a little bit of, whatever we call it.
No, he didn't. That would be great. I mean, we could even, you know, like, sunny with the hospitals, good sunny. They would see.
Now, we don't want to be passing it around.
And then, Riley was like, for now, I'm Riley's.
Yeah, I know.
No difference, immediate. Oh, they do, yeah. Are you sure you're ready? I think you're all on the, so how was it? Do you have that? I mean, I like him going to be wrong, but it ain't like.
We all, we're, we're. Yeah, you're doing that one. Does the coach?
We all have, we're, we're.
It's red lamp.
But he's just still, I don't know, when I turn off the microphone.
I, yeah, I don't know.
I turned my, oh, yeah.
That's, that's why I, I try and just using the phone, because it's the way to go. Computers are so finicky and stuff like that, especially.
Yeah, the microphones aren't that good either.
Yeah, especially if you're using Delta N, because it's right next to the speakers. And algorithm to try to cancel that out, or it's like.
Yeah, that's a good question.
It's just not working. Good timing, though.
Do you want to go audio?
I see, I do, I do, I do. I call them. How is it that, because it's going on like that?
I don't, it's not the song, they don't, they don't have, they don't have.
Hey, I'm, I'm. That's the least I work.
I think I can leave, yes, I know she's there, unless you're here right there, right? And damn, I don't think we got.
You, are you ready to go?
I am.
All right.
My arm?
Not yet, hang on. Okay, before we hit the committee of the whole meeting this evening going, Mrs. McFadden, on the planning department, had requested a meeting to discuss the fiscal year twenty-nineteen CDVG funds. This is a public hearing of the Barbour City Council. Today is Monday, April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty. Clear, please call the roll.
Mrs. Answal?
Uh, yes.
Mrs. Coburn?
Here.
Mrs. Debeck?
Here.
Mrs. Frye?
Here.
Mr. Griffin?
Here.
Mr. Griffin?
Here.
Who, Mr. Hayden?
Here.
Mr. Jaber?
Here.
Hey, Mrs. McFadden, you have the floor.
All right, thanks, everyone. Anytime we, 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 for allocate the CDVG funds, I would require a request of the amendments to our public planning action.
It's almost like winning the trick or roll. And we got $26,000. We don't know specifically how those programs respond to our money. We know what's going on. You know, maybe it's what will happen. We know that. But, you know, we need to, and at times, like, oh, we need to give it better hold on what those we need to, I mean, there's something in time progress. We can't come right now what those needs are. When again, we can't be bad. And, and we can, we can right now say, and we need to do all these activities, activities, but not humanity in that moment, because our C D G is not our money. That makes sense? Because that's what you're looking for. But it's like, we don't want to be funded. So that's why, that's like the reason we're seeing the comments, like, hey, they want to, they want to ask that I fund this, because if we can get it, you do it too.
So it's not that most of the like, well, should we be funded by that?
You know, I don't, I just think that it is one month, one month.
Okay. I'm not sure.
It's not like one month. I'll tell you.
Okay. So you don't say it's very possible you think they're, they're funded by that?
And then, and you know what? So what I'm saying to you, all of we guys, or all of you citizens, have not yet been given funds. They still have, hold up everything that they need to work away from that crap to contact us with those specific. So that's why I actually answered your question quite briefly right now. I don't, I don't, I'm trying to see if you can help me with anything, but I, I don't know.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes. Um, there's no, it's like it does not, but right now, what we're doing is we're going back on 19 action change. So we can use that money like Ray, because we already have, you know, nineteen months to add to that. We have to receive our twenty months yet. The work working on our action plan is just about, uh, right now, the twenty twenty, however it's done now. So, right now, we can use this for nineteen, and then as long as I add that, our action plan, I mean, twenty, we'll be able to do this for that number as well. So then we kind of need to call this out, you know, if we use it, you know, I just, you know, I think along the case, we need to, right now, I'm trying to estimate as far as I know. You're welcome.
Any other questions? Does anybody in the gallery have any questions?
Okay. Nobody on screen.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments?
I'd like to make a, a comment. Melissa, I did pass out to the council members who are here, the quick guide to C D G eligible activities, which you outlined already. It's revised equal six. But I will tell everyone that in discussions with our senators, U S senators, and congressmen, we've been, every community has looked at flexibility and discussed the need for flexibility and the use of this money. So that's why I think there's a lot of ambiguity and generalities when it comes to this funding. So Melissa's, like I said, been on the phone with state and federal reps and trying to get some, some answers. They haven't released a whole lot. But everyone's in the same boat as us, trying to get this appropriated and going through the criteria and motions. So when the money is released and the guidelines are solidified, that they can get that money out to the residents and businesses of the view.
Are there any other questions? Are there any other questions? Are there any other questions? Hearing none, this public hearing is closed at eight o'clock. Okay, we'll go right into the committee of the whole meeting. Okay, this is a committee of the whole meeting in the Barrow City Council. Today is Monday, April twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty. I call this meeting together at eight oh one. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Okay, citizens addressing bounds.
I receive none.
Okay. We'll go right into our committee reports. First off is planning, annexation, and codes with Mrs. Angelo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Planning, annexation, and codes, that's the theme being the council chambers, um, on that panel, uh, the moving of all, you know, the end of all that, the program will all as well as other council members and, and, uh, guests that are on X P. Hopefully, that's the way we get that to wrap all this up, very hard having the lesson for claiming April as a fairer common law. And this was created in nineteen thirty-eight, uh, the head of the, uh, brought out to the floor. Our integrity was disclaiming, um, we kind of involved local council, local groups, depended on how three are used. Um, and we have that, uh, we have that, uh, formation of community, you know, corporations, authorizing the formation of community, you know, corporations for the city of Barrow to, to be in order of the corporation. Uh, lots and lots of discussion with this, um, this is a, in our, this was another way to address and improve economic governance at times. Um, we, uh, we have some information that, uh, you will be, you know, giving us, and, um, hopefully that answers some questions that this is unknown, um, will also be asked to look at this and, uh, um, see if all the gallant brothers and, and the rest, um, it was a motion to talk to free reading, um, and he had, um, two, had first social support, um, unanimous, uh, Mr. Greer, and all the others. This language discussion, um, we, we have an applicant that has been given a traditional offer for the pen and paper. And again, I might have.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Streets sidewalks and lighting, Mr. Greer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Streets sidewalk and lighting that today, April twenty seventh, in council chambers. All members were present. Uh, Councilwoman Angelo and Councilwoman Frye were on the meeting, and all other council members are present. We had two requests for legislation. First piece of legislation was title transportation improvement district grant to support a transportation, transportation improvement district grant through Summit County and the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, for the expansion of jobs to the community. This, uh, is a project that is in the area where Summit D D, the Y M C A, focuses on, it's a part of a larger project that focuses on the ingress, the egress and ingress of that area. Uh, the work will add a hundred and eleven parking spots to the public parking that's owned by the city there. Uh, this is a grant that's up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and Harvard will be required to pay, or it's a grant up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars with a twenty-five percent grant.
It's twenty-five percent of the total cost up to two hundred and fifty thousand.
There you go. Do it. Yeah. Uh, and the project is estimated to be ninety, around ninety-three thousand dollars. The second piece of legislation was a late piece of legis, legislation. We invoked council rule seven oh two to suspend council rule three oh two. This was a draft ordinance entered into contract with ODOT, final resolution authorizing the mayor and the mayor to enter into contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the resurfacing of South Bambier Avenue between Snyder Avenue and Robinson Avenue and Water, West Waterloo Road between Wooster Road and Odette Avenue, including curbs, ramps, and pavement markings. Uh, this is an issue, or this is funded by issue eight, or can be funded by issue eight. This is eighty-twenty grant. The total estimates of the final resolution has been increased from the initial, what we thought, the project is now estimated to be about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Specifically, it's a hundred and ninety thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars. And this latest discussion, um, I spoke with the service director today by email, and we related that there will probably be a delay in the two thousand and twenty street resurfacing program. Uh, this is due to economic hardships that COVID-nineteen has brought on, and we're hoping through the summer that revenue increases, things get back to normal a little bit, and we're looking at a late summer, early fall, early fall, um, resurfacing program. And, uh, we adjourned at six thirty, and we'd act streets, so I'll do my own process.
Thank you very much. Next up is Mrs. Coburn with City Utility.
Thank you, Mr. Coburn. City Utilities, Matt, I am in the council chambers. We have two new, uh, requests for legislation. At first, it's, I like, uh, we have Governor Keating and Quin, authorizing his air to apply for acceptance in an emergency cooperative agreement for design of waste water treatment plant in space, we, uh, between the city of Barrow and Ohio Water Development. One, if the, uh, I don't think it's, uh, sort of, uh, one hundred and thirty thousand. From the unappropriated, I have a, uh, is a copy of one, either, or, and, uh, this was also written, uh, by, um, some total of the, uh, I, uh, we had the almost boring most discussion.
Thank you very much. Public welfare and safety, Mrs. DeBeck.
Thank you, President. Public welfare and safety, I'm speaking, and, um, our, our, is in town, in the, we are aware of. Um, on the, the committee made, it's from all of us, and, um, it's a longer time, so I can officially say this. Uh, we had no request for legislation. Uh, we did have a little bit of this in the discussion. The first one was, uh, questioned by a career regarding safety for our employees, how, uh, the, um, the mayor, Eric, that now, and was for employees, like, uh, and, um, it was kind of, um, not on a career, it was mainly about basic, uh, we were, we dated. Mr. Greer, the town, and to me, and he's been, we've been making a lot of questions about what our plans are on our testing, and we have tests available. The mayor answered that we regulate on self mainstream, um, available, and, um, he mentioned that, um, well, still not how, they don't have any test right now, so we'll just, uh, set up more testing, um, in, um, and with that, public welfare, you're in the on.
Thank you very much. Rules marketing development, Mr. Greer.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, rules marketing, and, uh, that's the, uh, that's the, and, uh, most lately, that I, uh, uh, that's the, like, uh, for our first piece of, uh, draft board, the title of the charter amendment, the nomination of primary election, authorizing the direct review, the coming county, the, 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 the elected of the city of Barrow to abolish primary election, held on the eighteen, eighteen environment section, general municipal election, to reach the cause of electing for Barrow taxpayers. He voted upon as the local representative, twenty-nine, the general election. Uh, we will be going, uh, free reading on this, uh, board, and, uh, emotionally, they call it a free registration, uh, and they voted on the ballot. Get a, 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 a comment, um, this is definitely, that will, uh, sixty-five thousand dollars to go to the workers, paying, uh, the, the, and, uh, the, they say, have some, so we would know where someone's fault of that money had been. So, uh, with that, uh, I'll go on to the next, that's the thing. The second thing, the draft board, the title, the, the, amendment, primary election, authorizing the direct review, coming county, the, the, amendment, the elected of the city of Barrow to establish a main primary election, giving for municipal election in the city of Barrow in order to reduce the cost of our primary election for the Barrow taxpayers. This also, on the, uh, general election ballot. This may be called the city registration, and it's voted on in the, in that, uh, thing. Uh, there is, the, uh, lately, uh, lately, uh, so I have, uh, council, uh, and, uh, emotionally, may I, uh, send attention, and it was, and, uh, and, uh, emotionally, the, uh, that, uh, I, uh, I, I know, actually, I, I know, actually, I, I know, actually, that's why twenty nineteen, C D D, annual action plan, but, uh, we also had, uh, Mrs. DeBeck and Melissa had a public hearing on this, after which they explained this. So we did make a motion to call, to, and voted on in the, in that, uh, this, that there.
Is this one going one?
Yes, I think so.
Yeah. Okay.
We did have, uh, the, I, 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 uh, we may have, uh, during, uh, this, for, uh,
Thank you very much. Next up is Mr. Kaver, environmental health and social services.
Thank you, Mr. President. Environmental health and social services met at six forty-nine, April twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty, council chambers. All members present, I'm sure, sure Griffin was, so, through telephone communication, other members also present noted. We had no request for legislation, and Miss Laneis, we have one. Uh, Mrs. DeBeck brought up the increase point for the health department, and, uh, the mayor answered, he has no idea what's going on until tomorrow, we'll give details about that. And with that, we adjourn to six fifty, and I'll pass, sir.
Thank you very much. City properties, parks, and recreation, Mr. Hugge.
Thank you, Mr. President. City properties, parks, and recreation met earlier in council chambers, all members present, with Councilwoman Coburn being remote. We had one request for legislation. It was late, so we had to invoke council rule seven oh two to suspend council rule three oh two. It was a, uh, draft ordinance appropriation of Cafferty Park, appropriating thirty-five thousand from the unappropriated item of the Parks Revolving Fund to the Parks Revolving Fund budget. This was also referred to finance. The discussion was that fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and forty was a match from various organizations and fundraisers, so that no city funds were used in this project. A portion of it was paid in two thousand and nineteen to use as limitless playground at the Cafferty. The grant was from the O D N R Land Water Conservation Grant, and this project is to resurface the basketball court at the Cafferty Park. Miss Laneis, discussion, uh, directors, Tracy let us know that Newton Park, Christmas Park, Annadine, and Tesco Park were finished by Linger's lumberjack, lumberjacks after three bidding process, and they came in the best. We adjourned at six oh five, and that passed.
Thank you very much. Finance personnel, Mrs. Pratt.
Thank you, Mr. President. The financial personnel committee, met at nine, eight, April twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty, eight, council chambers, and, and remotely, all council members in committee were present, as all, all council people, and, and, uh, we had, uh, so, uh, placing all, all, with the revolution title, restructuring of local government funds. This is, um, this was, um, Trump, uh, government, and, 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 uh, to restate a local government fund, you, 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 uh, this was, 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 um, called out, and, 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 the second piece was placing with the draft board, side ice appropriation, Northern Territory Two. This was to appropriate a hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars from the unappropriated item of the Northern Territory Two, from the capital line of the Northern Territory Two, from the capital fund. This is the first, finally, on, um, we, it was voted on, and, uh, three, one, three yes, and one no. We had, uh, the, the, and we had, uh, then, uh, three, this was the draft, uh, appropriation of, this was an appropriation, and then, um, thirty-five thousand dollars from the unappropriated item of the Parks Revolving Fund, the Parks Revolving Fund, this was, um, uh, presented by, uh, the, uh, this was, uh, this is, uh, the, uh, the, uh, we have, uh, the, uh, on the agenda for the meeting, and it is to enter into contract as a re-freement, come back, uh, we, 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 the, uh, 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 the, I just.
But we're not taking the positive, that's nothing to do with us. And it's something that only paid for Sunday.
Well, I'm going to talk to Jeremy in fiscal office tomorrow and see if they can, if Coventry can send us our money.
Well, I think that's definitely something we should, and then we should look at if they had any elections that were within the four. Same, Coventry County Department.
You have your input wave today? All right.
Yeah, I didn't, I'm going to keep trying to get that for some more. We should have something somewhere, you would think, around here, twenty years ago. Who was mayor then? Eight seven hundred eight.
You like that perch?
I'm just trying to get you ready. Okay. Do you think you were ready? Yeah, you got back down.
Okay, let's get this going here. Okay, this is a regular legislative meeting of the Barben City Council. Today is Monday, April 27, 2020. It is eight twenty-seven. Please stand for the invitation by Mrs. Covert.
Hello, we ask to remove this and that, it's very unprecedented, I protect our first responders and all those in the health and, and all those who work in hospitals and nursing homes. We ask to eliminate and guide us to make decisions to these negotiations. Our, that's the beginning, we just say that, or they may.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Angela.
Here.
Mrs. Covert.
Here.
Mrs. DeBevick.
Here.
Mrs. Frye.
Here.
Mr. Greer.
Here.
Mr. Griffin. Mr. Reddick.
Here.
Mr. Jaber.
Here.
Okay, once again, Council Rule 104 states, if the president chooses to combine the committee of the whole meeting and a regular legislative meeting, the committee of the whole meeting shall follow the regular legislative meeting. The council shall not vote on a requested legislation until the next scheduled regular legislative meeting session. Since we are not doing this in that format, we will need to invoke Council Rule 702. Mrs. DeBevick, do I have a motion?
Thank you, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to invoke Council Rule 702.
Thank you, and Mr. Hyde.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to second the motion to suspend 702.
Thank you. Motion was made by Mrs. DeBevick and seconded by Mr. Hyde to invoke Council Rule 702 to suspend Council Rule 104. Are there any remarks? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Approval of the minutes of the regular legislative meeting, Mrs. DeBevick.
Thank you, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to approve the minute of the regular, if I would like to do the evening, held on Monday, April 13, 2020, to add an emergency.
Thank you, and Mr. Hyde.
Thank you, Mr. President, I will second the motion to approve those minutes.
Thank you. It was moved by Mrs. DeBevick and seconded by Mr. Hyde to approve the minutes on the regular legislative meeting held on Monday, April 13, 2020, as presented. Are there any remarks? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are adopted. Acceptance of the finance report, Mrs. Frye.
Thank you, Mr. President, I would like to accept that the finance department report for the month of March 2021 is presented by my play.
And Mrs. DeBevick.
Thank you, Mr. President, I would like to second Mrs. Frye, I'm sure she wants to accept it.
It was moved by Mrs. Frye and seconded by Mrs. DeBevick to approve the finance department report for the month of March 2020, as presented. Are there any remarks? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Finance report is accepted. Petitions and claims.
There are none.
Matters, matters requested.
The ones present have it, the ones that are removed, they're, they're new ones.
Thank you. Any citizens addressing council? Okay. First reading of ordinances and resolutions.
Ordinance number forty-three, twenty twenty, presented by Mrs. Frye, title appropriation of Catherine Clark. An ordinance appropriating $35,000 on the unappropriated item of the Clark's revolving fund to the Clark's revolving fund budget and declared emergency.
Motion to suspend, Mrs. Frye.
Thank you, Mr. President, I would like to, as required by section 5.10 of the Barben City Charter, we suspend it.
Thank you, and Mr. Hyde.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll second the motion to suspend.
A motion was made by Mrs. Frye and seconded by Mr. Hyde to suspend the rule as required by section 5.10 of the Barben City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mrs. Covert.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yeah.
Mr. Jaber.
Yes.
Mrs. Angela.
Yeah.
Mrs. DeBevick.
Yeah.
Mr. Greer.
Yes.
Mr. Heide.
Yes.
Mrs. Frye.
Yeah.
Motion to adopt, Mrs. Frye.
Thank you, Mr. President, I would like to give out on board word number forty-three, that at 2020.
And Mr. Hyde.
Thank you, Mr. President, I second the motion to adopt.
Thank you. Motion, a motion was made by Mrs. Frye and seconded by Mr. Hyde to adopt ordinance number forty-three, twenty twenty. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mrs. Frye.
Yeah.
Mr. Heide.
Yes.
Mr. Greer.
Yes.
Mrs. DeBevick.
Yeah.
Mrs. Angela.
Yeah.
Mr. Jaber.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yeah.
Mrs. Covert.
Yes.
Resolution number forty-four, twenty twenty, presented by Mr. Heide, title Transportation Improvement District Grant. A resolution of the city improvement district, TID, grant, Resumet County and the Ohio Department Transportation, ODOT, for the expansion of jobs to the community and declared emergency.
Motion to suspend, Mr. Greer.
Correct. Send Mr. Heide. Do we read or just going to continue?
Thank you.
You're up.
All right, thank you, Mr. President, I move that the rule required, as required by section 5.10 of the Barben City Charter, be suspended.
Thank you, and Mrs. Angela.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I would second that message to suspend it.
Thank you. Motion was made by Mr. Greer, seconded by Mrs. Angela, to suspend the rule as required by section 5.10 of the Barben City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Greer.
Yes.
Mrs. Frye.
Yeah.
Mrs. Angela.
Yeah.
Mr. Heide.
Yes.
Mr. Jaber.
No.
Mrs. DeBevick.
Yeah.
Mr. Griffin.
Yeah.
Mrs. Covert.
Yes.
Motion to adopt, Mr. Greer.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move that ordinance, resolution number forty-four, twenty twenty be adopted.
Thank you, and Mrs. Angela.
Thank you, Mr. President, I would second the motion to adopt.
Thank you. Motion was made by Mr. Greer and seconded by Mrs. Angela to adopt resolution number forty-four, twenty twenty. Are there any remarks?
Yes, Mr. President. I voted no tonight for, reason I think she's underwriting why is it on this, so using this money for, I know you said we're getting a grant for it, granted it's about 95%. I think, or ninety-three thousand minus twenty-five, it's gave on six thousand dollars and used for other stuff, getting this done, that need be done, so that's the reason I voted no tonight, but thank you. Okay?
Any other remarks? Go ahead.
Um, just for clarification, I thought it was clear with, with this project comes quite a few jobs at DD. So if you've been following them, they've closed their facility in Tombridge and they have closed all their facilities except for Barben and Calhoun Hall, so they split their employees between the two. So this TID grant has to be associated with new jobs, and so that's why we're applying for it. The project's going to go through, this is just a resolution of support and it's going to help bring in those new jobs which we desperately need, so. DD's been a great partner over the years, they've had several certain executive directors, and they've been a great partner of the community and we're happy that they're, they're here and they're looking to expand, so that's why we're here for this resolution.
Thank you. Any other remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mrs. Covert.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yeah.
Mrs. DeBevick.
Yeah.
Mr. Jaber.
No.
Mr. Heide.
Yes.
Mrs. Angela.
Yeah.
Mrs. Frye.
Yeah.
Mr. Greer.
Yes.
Resolution number forty-five, twenty twenty, presented by Mr. Greer, title entering contract, ODOT, final resolution. A final resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the resurancing of South Pampi Avenue between Snyder Avenue and Robinson Avenue and West Water Road between Wister Road and Credalia Avenue, including curvings and pavement markings and declared emergency.
Motion to suspend, Mr. Greer.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move that the recall, rule as required by section 5.10 of the Barben City Charter be suspended.
Thank you, and Mrs. Angela.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I would second that message to suspend it.
Thank you. Motion was made by Mr. Greer and seconded by Mrs. Angela to suspend the rule as required by section 5.10 of the Barben City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Jaber.
Yes.
Mrs. DeBevick.
Yeah.
Mrs. Frye.
Yeah.
Mrs. Covert. Mr. Heide.
Yes.
Mr. Greer.
Yes.
Mrs. Angela.
Yeah.
Mr. Griffin.
Yeah.
Motion to adopt, Mr. Greer.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move for the adoption of resolution forty-five, twenty twenty.
Thank you, and Mrs. Angela.
Thank you, Mr. President, I would second that message to adopt.
Thank you. Motion was made by Mr. Greer and seconded by Mrs. Angela to adopt resolution number forty-five, twenty twenty. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mr. Griffin.
Yeah.
Mrs. Angela.
Yeah.
Mr. Greer.
Yes.
Mr. Heide.
Yes.
Mrs. Covert.
Yeah.
Mrs. Frye.
Yeah.
Mrs. DeBevick. Mr. Jaber.
Yes.
Ordinance number forty-six, twenty twenty, presented by Mr. Griffin, title proposed charter amendment, elimination of primary election. An ordinance authorizing and directing the Senate County Board of Elections to submit a proposed charter amendment to the electors of the city of Barbiton to abolish the primary election held on the eighth Tuesday prior to such general municipal election to reduce the cost of elections for the Barbiton taxpayers to be voted upon at the November third, twenty twenty election. And this is a first reading only. Ordinance number forty-seven, twenty twenty, presented by Mr. Griffin, title proposed charter amendment, primary election date. An ordinance authorizing and directing the Senate County Board of Elections to submit a proposed charter amendment to the electors of the city of Barbiton to establish a main primary election date through municipal elections in the city of Barbiton in order to reduce the cost of the primary election for the Barbiton taxpayers to be voted upon at the November third, twenty twenty general election and declared emergency. And this is a first reading only. Ordinance number forty-eight, twenty twenty, presented by Mr. Griffin, title Fiscal Year 2019 CD VG Annual Action Plan Amendment. An ordinance amended the Fiscal Year 2019 CD VG Annual Action Plan Budget and declared emergency.
Motion to suspend, Mr. Greer.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, I have that the rule is required by section five, one zero of the Barben City Charter, suspend it.
And Mr. Hyde.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll second the motion to suspend.
Thank you. Motion was made by Mr. Griffin and seconded by Mr. Hyde to suspend the rule as required by section 5.10 of the Barben City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mrs. Frye.
Yeah.
Mr. Greer.
Yes.
Mrs. Covert.
Yes.
Mrs. DeBevick. Mrs. Angela. Mr. Griffin. Mr. Heide.
Yes.
Mr. Jaber.
Yes.
Motion to adopt, Mr. Greer.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, I move to adopt that ordinance number forty-three, nine, twenty-one.
Mr. Hyde.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll second the motion to adopt.
Thank you, motion was made by Mr. Griffin, seconded by Mr. Hyde to adopt ordinance number forty-eight, twenty twenty. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mr. Jaber.
Yes.
Mr. Heide.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin. Mrs. Angela. Mrs. DeBevick. Mrs. Covert. Mr. Greer.
Yes.
Mrs. Frye. Resolution number forty-nine, twenty twenty, presented by Mrs. Angela, title Fair Housing Month. A resolution by the council of the city of Barbiton proclaiming April as the Fair Housing Month and declared emergency.
Motion to suspend, Mrs. Angela.
Thank you, Mr. President, I would like to give that rule as required by section nine point one zero of the Barben City Charter, we suspend it.
And Mrs. Covert.
Thank you, Mr. President, I second that motion on suspension.
Motion was made by Mrs. Angela, seconded by Mrs. Covert to suspend the rule as required by section 5.10 of the Barben City Charter. Are there any remarks?
I have one.
No, court.
Thank you, Mr. President, I would just one way, I could have made a very well committed with the government, um, the committee, there are only three days left in this book, can be edited in May, or is there a week, April?
No, April's considered Fair Housing Month.
Okay, yes. It's just one specific thing, I was asking for what the play was, what's the date?
Yeah, I passed it along as soon as I got the information from hub.
Thank you, I'm sure there is.
Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Heide.
Yes.
Mrs. Covert. Mrs. DeBevick. Mr. Greer.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin. Mr. Jaber.
Yes.
Mrs. Frye. Mrs. Angela.
Motion to adopt, Mrs. Angela.
Thank you, Mr. President, I would like to give that rule another forty-nine, twenty one to give that.
And Mrs. Covert.
Thank you, Mr. President, that statement that not supported.
Motion was made by Mrs. Angela and seconded by Mrs. Covert to adopt resolution number forty-nine, twenty twenty. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mrs. Angela. Mrs. Frye.
Yeah.
Mr. Jaber.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin. Mr. Greer.
Yes.
Mrs. DeBevick. Mrs. Covert. Mr. Heide.
Yes.
Ordinance number fifty, twenty twenty, presented by Mrs. Angela, title Formation of a Community Improvement Corporation. An ordinance authorizing the formation of a community improvement corporation for the city of Barbiton and improving its articles of open corporation and declared emergency. And this is a first reading only. Resolution Number 51-2020 presented by Mrs. Coburn, title Waste Water Treatment Plan Improvements Phase 3 OWDA. A re- a resolution of Council of the City of Barbton authorizing the mayor to apply for, accept with energy to a cooperative agreement, design of wastewater treatment plan improvements, Phase 3 project between the city of Barbton and the Ohio Water Development Authority and declare an emergency.
Motion to suspend, Mrs. Coburn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barben City Charter be suspended.
And Mrs. Fry?
Thank you, Mr. President. I second Mrs. Coburn's motion to suspend.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Coburn and seconded by Mrs. Fry to suspend the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barben City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mrs. DeBevitt?
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Heide?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yeah, yeah.
Mrs. Fry?
Yeah, yeah.
Mrs. Angela?
Yeah, yeah.
Mrs. Coburn?
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Javer?
Yes.
Mr. Greer?
Yes.
Motion to adopt, Mrs. Coburn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Resolution 51-2021 to be adopted.
And Mrs. Fry?
Thank you, Mr. President. I second Mrs. Coburn's motion to adopt Resolution 51-2021.
A motion was made by Mrs. Coburn and seconded by Mrs. Fry to adopt Resolution Number 51-2020. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mr. Greer?
Yes.
Mr. Javer?
Yes.
Mrs. Coburn?
Yeah, yeah.
Mrs. Angela?
Yeah, yeah.
Mrs. Fry?
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Griffin?
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Heide?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBevitt?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Ordinance Number 52-2020 presented by Mrs. Coburn, title incorporation Norton Sanitary Sewer. An ordinance incorporating $135,670 from the unincorporated items of the Norton Sanitary Sewer construction fund to the capital line of the Norton Sanitary Sewer Construction Fund and declaring emergency.
Motion to suspend, Mrs. Fry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barben City Charter be suspended.
And Mrs. Coburn?
Thank you, Mr. President. I second that motion for suspension.
Thank you. Motion was made by Mrs. Fry, seconded by Mrs. Coburn to suspend the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barben City Charter. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mrs. Angela?
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Javer?
Yes.
Mr. Greer?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yeah, yeah.
Mrs. Coburn?
Yeah, yeah.
Mrs. Fry?
Yeah, yeah.
Mrs. DeBevitt?
No.
Mr. Heide?
No.
Motion to adopt, Mrs. Fry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the ordinance number quickly PG-2021 to be adopted.
And Mrs. Coburn?
Thank you, Mr. President. I second that motion for that motion.
A motion was made by Mrs. Fry, seconded by Mrs. Coburn to adopt the Number 52-2020. Are there any remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption. Here are my remarks. Excuse me, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm voting no on this ordinance because it's a combination of the three that I vetoed or opposed last time, and it looks silly if I authorize it now.
Anyone else?
Mrs. DeBevitt?
Thank you.
Mrs. DeBevitt, go.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will also be voting no to the meeting, as I oppose the repeaters of legislation the last time, and it would be crazy for me to, uh, unless I was like, my decision. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mr. Heide?
No.
Mrs. DeBevitt?
No.
Mrs. Fry?
Yeah, yeah.
Mrs. Coburn?
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Griffin?
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Greer?
Yes.
Mr. Javer?
Yes.
Mrs. Angela?
Yeah, yeah.
Resolution Number 53-2020 presented by Mrs. Fry, title Restoration of Local Government Fund. A resolution strongly urging Governor Dewine and the Ohio Legislature to reinstate the local government fund to communities throughout the state of Ohio and declare an emergency.
Motion to suspend, Mrs. Fry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barben City Charter be suspended.
And Mrs. DeBevitt?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Mrs. Fry's motion on suspension.
A motion was made by Mrs. Fry, seconded by Mrs. DeBevitt to suspend the rule as required by Section 5.10 of the Barben City Charter. Are there any remarks? Mr. Greer?
Thank you, Mr. President. If every council member can do me a favor and look at this ordinance, it's half blank, and we're voting on it. So, um, I will be voting no on both suspension and adoption.
Are there any other remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on suspension.
Mr. Griffin? Mrs. Angela?
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Heide?
Yes.
Mr. Javer?
Yes.
Mrs. Fry?
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Greer?
No.
Mrs. Coburn?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBevitt?
No.
Motion to adopt, Mrs. Fry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt on Resolution Number 53-2021.
And Mrs. DeBevitt?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to second Mrs. Fry's motion on adoption.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Fry and seconded by Mrs. DeBevitt to adopt Resolution Number 53-2020. Are there any remarks? Mr. Heide?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I respect Mr. Greer's pointing out that most of it's blank. I am going to put this trust in the hands to write this because as I stare at this, I just want to make it known that I believe the word strongly is not enough. Governor Dewine's predecessor, Governor Kasich, had slashed in his seven to eight years 45% of the local government fund, which is an absolute atrocity. And I believe that hopefully all communities can come together and urge Governor Dewine. While he can't reinstate the entire amount, now is the time that he can bridge that gap, make restitution to our cities, and help us all recover, especially in these towns. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other remarks? Mr. Greer?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just would like to go on the record and say that I do support the intention of this. It's a good intention, I think we need to. But it is completely irresponsible of council to vote on something that is not on paper. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other remarks? Clerk, please call the roll.
Yeah, I respect everyone's opinions and thoughts, and I understand the timing of this is not coming together like it typically should or would. You know, with this COVID-19 and everything that's going on. It's kind of day by day. And I know that there's been a lot of talk on business stimulus and the next wave. And well, what about the municipalities? And do you forgive utility payments? Do you forgive property tax? Well, everyone needs this money. This flow of money is very important. And so, you know, as we're talking about this, more and more communities are kind of jumping on top of this and wanting input. I want to make sure that communities are passing the same legislation. Uh, so making it defined per, uh, community, but making it general as well. As Mr. Heide pointed out, this was something that was kind of stripped away. It was a handshake deal back in the 30s. It was stripped away under Governor Kasich. And it was free money that the communities used for whatever purpose, so it went straight to the general fund. Not a lot of restrictions. So I respect everyone's other feelings and ideas and opinions. And I will have something this week. It's just getting through everything and making sure that it sends the right message and that it includes everybody in every community that we can. So I respect everyone's opinion, and I hope that this passes so we can move forward. If this does not pass tonight, I'm still sending a letter. It just, in my opinion, looks very bad when there's not support from the council. Again, I understand that the resolution in front of you is incomplete, but that's being worked on.
Thank you. Are there any other remarks? Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Mrs. DeBevitt?
No.
Mrs. Coburn?
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Greer?
No.
Mrs. Fry?
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Javer?
Yes.
Mr. Heide?
Yes.
Mrs. Angela?
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Griffin?
Yeah, yeah.
End of first reading.
Second ratings of ordinances and resolutions.
Ordinance Number 39-2020 presented by Mrs. Fry, title Enter into Contract Regional Income Tax Agency. An ordinance authorizing the Director of Finance to enter as a contractor for Regional Income Tax Agency, Rita, to administer the city's income tax starting January 1st, 2021, and declare an emergency. End of second reading.
Third ratings of ordinances and resolutions.
There are none.
Appointments.
I have none.
Nonsanus and unfinished visits.
I have nothing.
Communication for the man.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Hope all council members hear me. All right, as we make investments and modifications, like moving to this seat. I appreciate everyone's. Yes. DD, can you hear me? Okay, I just want to applaud everyone's efforts. I know that the.
That's why it's phones on. I'm doing echo. Echo through some. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I know I'm on two screens. Um, I've got my notes on my laptop, which is. There we go. Um, I just wanted to thank everyone. I know that there's a lot of changes and things that are going on. This truly is day by day. There are. I've been keeping track of the number of conference calls and letters, information updates from local partners to the county, to the state, to the feds. There's a third call in the White House this week that'll be on. So just a tremendous amount of information, a tremendous amount of information that you have to kind of get through. It's always changing. And as we move through internally, and speaking to our counterparts on the effectiveness of COVID-19 and how it's affecting our city services and revenues and expenses. We're looking at this in great detail. You may have seen how some communities have had in Cogga Falls have eliminated or suspended all community events during the spring and the summer, and that might flow into the call. So we're looking at all those things, and we're looking at how we can continue to provide services for residents without, from a safe distance and keeping everyone healthy and safe. So there's a lot that goes into that. So we will have another update this week. We'll be providing updates to the public in a bi-weekly conference call internally. So with the governor's plans starting to roll out today on reopening the state, that does affect us, and we've been working on that. The team I put together has been working on that. So a lot to roll out for soon. There have been some inquiries. If there's a business interested in moving to Barben, the first step was to send them to the planning department. The first step from there, whether they have a building or not, is to fill out the zoning compliance form. So if you know what kind of business it is, we can tell them where to go, the zoning laws, or the processes to change them. So just want to put that out there. Um, we were continuing to meet and discuss with Suma and other health agencies in the area, the county and the state on best practices and moving forward as we work to come out. I think the governor's done a great job of everything he's done getting Dr. Acton and rolling reopening out because we don't want a second wave to come through. So fingers crossed we're continuing to move forward to help stimulate the economy, but also to keep everyone safe. Stimulus programs, the foundation of the city in DCDC has been exhausted. That was a $10,000 loan for a business. And they've gone through that. The checks have been sent out. It's worked very smoothly. The other program that we participated in was the Greater Acton Chamber of the City of the County, $5,000 grants that did not even be paid. And so that's been exhausted, and we're getting the grant agreements out. So we're looking into a phase two, and that's where things like the CDVT amendment, the additional CDVT funding comes into play. That's where our action plan comes into play. That's where creating a CIC comes into play possibly. That's where we're working with NCS and NDS and DCDC and the county, all those other organizations. Because we know that businesses need help, but we know that there's other help that is needed in the community. So we're trying to ascertain what that is and make sure that we have the flexibility from CDVG and other partners to meet those needs. It was asked by Councilwoman DeBevitt about the term review commission. So we have, basically every member has submitted. I'm still waiting for one more to confirm. In the meantime, as we go through these actions, our law director was looking at best practices on how to have these types of meetings. So obviously, she came to a resolution. This is the second time we've had this, so we're working through that. And we're not alone. Other communities are having the same vote. So that should come to city council for confirmation here at the next meeting. So. I am putting together a committee slash task force to review the reopening plan from the governor and how that will affect our community and what we can do to help stimulate our local economy. Whether it's how does it affect our community stimulating the economy, review of community events, business communication and outreach. So putting this together, and we'll start meeting here very soon. Um, and then just a quick update as we're going through this. An update on the foundation grant application that came through city council the other week, the technology upgrades. By working with other organizations in town, I was able to get a matching, some matching funds of the $7,500. So I'm still going to go through with the grant. We had some discussion on if I should apply for the full $15,000 or not. I'm going to apply for the full $15,000 and put in there that there is matching funds to another organization of the $7,500. So just wanted to let you know that there's other organizations that are contributing to this as we move forward. I don't think the cost will be up to $15,000, but we're going to apply for the full thing. And when I hit you with the foundation, I'll let you know. This is what we're looking at. These are the costs. This is the timeframe. So that'll move very quickly because I've already started those conversations.[1765.28] quickly because I've already started those conversations. So, wanted to help, wanted to show you, let you know that we're just not going to the foundation until it's a concern of maybe foundation money's used, should be used in a better manner, a different manner. So, just wanted to point out that we are looking at partnerships and have received a confirmation of some matching funds. So, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Anything else from the bottom?
Yes, Mr. President. First of all, thank you for ordering this stuff, and Renee, you're awesome, a lot of hard work in this, and you've helped me out a lot, a lot of questions. And thank you personally. And also, just so you can, Mary, talk to the planning department. They communicate better with us, Mr. Man. Communicate better with us about if new businesses do go into town in our wards, maybe they should contact our council people so we should be aware of it. Example, that day, I was driving around my ward, and I stopped seeing a new business. They're digging up, but they're on Looser Road. It's going to be daycare for kids, kids daycare. And I asked them what's going on. They said, you already talked to the planning committee. They've been approved. And we just need to know a lot of that kind of stuff. So, I was not on doors and not knowing. I told the mister Heide about it, and I think we should be more aware, a little bit better than we are. And this way, just communicate better.
Yeah, that's not a problem. That business actually came through the planning department middle of last year, I believe. So, it's been a while. So, I'm kind of surprised it's taken this long after they're just opening up because it's been close to a year now.
So, just to email it off too. But that way, I'm not going to door knock and say, hey, how you doing? My name's this, this, and what are you guys doing?
Yeah, I've got to assume that the planning department assumed that they're already operational because it happened so long ago.
Assuming this email, since you're connecting your people in the planning department, that will help a lot.
Right. Again, I'm assuming that they felt that it was already operational since it's about a year ago. So, I don't know how far back you want to go.
Yeah, just a little communication, you know, emails.
Oh, yeah, we're always there.
Yeah. I appreciate your time. That's true.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to piggyback in, just when Mr. J, Councilman Jaeger and I spoke, it was more or less just two sentence email that says, hey, you know, an application came through, approved in your ward, no different than liquor permits to whoever's ward it is that this has come across. Just a quick heads up. It's just a nice to see, it's nice to see emails. I know sometimes the director already says email fatigue. There's, to me, there's no such thing as email fatigue. I want to read 20 emails a day from a city. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Greer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to publicly recognize Councilwoman Coburn for all the work that she's been doing with her mask. There's other businesses, Aaron's Nail Salon has stepped up big time and started making masks for the community. Coburn was kind of like the first one out the door, ran out of material, and then had to go get more. So, I just want to let her know that it's appreciated, that they go on the team. And I just want to thank her personally for what she's doing for the community.
Anybody else?
Mrs. DeBevick.
Mrs. DeBevick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know if it was the platform to make an adjustment or how I'm going to write my health, but I would like to see F D F back every Monday at eight and get the file out now because, you know, I don't think if we were really committed to the whole and in the rest of the day, like a different one, maybe it would cause me to not go down on Monday, but anyway, because I'd like to have comfortable with that and things that we, I think that at any time I would sort of see. So, I don't know if we can talk about that, but this is the platform to do that. I feel about it. I like your more decisions and how to run this. I don't know how I'm going to feel about it, but I would like to see I can transition out of the vote voting in this and make as possible.
Can I, what if we went back to the, do committee of the whole follow, no legislative followed by committee of the whole, then in two weeks, where you have two weeks in between committee of the whole? Do you know what I'm saying, Nene?
You'd still have to do one.
Between divisions, that definitely we don't have in the way, we can't check any but what place we've been, right?
What I have so far, you could. You could do what I have up to date. I think I have three pieces of legislation. They could call for it in the following week. They could pass it.
And then call for it.
And then call for it new after that.
We would have to have one committee of the whole meeting.
Yes.
And then the next meeting, next week, we'd have legislative and then another committee of the whole. And then we would go to every two weeks. Okay, we could do that.
What do you guys?
So, once you have the committee of the whole, we got to have a legislative on that three of them. Skip two weeks.
I would like when they had that vote on that, I might be a little late, and then if you get a hold of it, because that means you have a probably really go over it lightly and decide. Because this is kind of that fast, plus, plus.
It's still going to be that way. It's still going to be as many hours because you're going to have the same meetings in your foot clock, the committee of the whole, the legislative.
But just reversed.
But if we do this, try and do the background and do our research upon law legislation. So, we're not trying to pray around it.
Well, even more importantly, I get the opportunity to, if anybody does, knows that, you know, and you would usually have questions right at, you have time to do that.
Or we're, or since we're doing this, tonight was a lot better than two weeks ago. I mean, it's up to you guys.
Yeah. I thought tonight went a lot better than last week.
Are they still saying that not, they're saying you go almost to the gym, correct?
I agree with Carla that I might like my C S till week in, if they all pass it, but if not, I would like my C S switched.
Okay, what we'll do is we'll meet next week on the fourth and have a committee of the whole meeting. And then on the 11th, we'll start out with a legislative meeting and then go to committee of the whole. And then we'll have, we'll be two weeks ahead on the committee of the whole meeting. Does that make sense to everybody?
So, that way, we have to have two committees of the whole meeting in the next week, or the on the fourth.
You will?
Next week.
No, next week. Next week.
We'll have a committee of the whole meeting next week, committee of the whole meeting only. Then, on the 11th, we'll start out with the legislative meeting from the committee of the whole from the week before. Then, after the legislative meeting, we'll go into a committee of the whole meeting.
Going to committee, individual committee meetings.
Right, right.
And my door is always open. I was answering emails on Saturday and Sunday. I know there wasn't a lot of time, but, you know, myself and my department execs are always making ourselves available, so.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So, this, we are, we are going to make the residents to give feedback. That's not my problem. So.
Anyone else? Right.
Do, okay, I guess my question is, do we want next Monday, do we want all committee committees to meet, or just the one that has legislation?
Just the ones.
Use your eyes as well. I mean, tell me what to do.
Well, sometimes there's
Other stuff?
Yeah, other business. No, we'll all meet. They'll all meet. Go ahead.
If a committee meeting lasts one minute, because there's no, that's no big deal.
Right. Because you never know what's going to come up, whether it's on the agenda or not.
Okay, so all committee, and then committee of the whole next Monday?
Right. At six o'clock.
I'll have, just so everyone knows, I'll have Holly send out the go-to meeting instructions. So, every time there's a go-to meeting, there's a new login, there's a new phone number. So, we just recycle everything. So, be looking out for that invite.
Everybody got it?
Yeah.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned and
They have to make
Oh, excuse me, I thought already this. Okay, with nothing else, do I have a motion to adjourn? Mrs. DeBevick. And Mr. Heide.
Mr. President, I'll second the motion to adjourn.
Thank you. It was moved by Mrs. DeBevick and seconded by Mr. Heide, then we adjourn. All those in favor who signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned at 9:16.
This whole thing, this.